Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November eighth, two thousand and twelve meeting of the Goshough Town Planning Board. As we usually do, we'll start with introductions of people up here at the head table. Mark, or starting with Brian.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil DeVanzo Selectman.
Richard Beany.
John Heiko, Vice Chair.
Galabrec Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond Chair.
Brian Hanson.
Barbara Griffin.
Simone Hamel Alternate.
Mark Warding.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. The first order of business tonight are the minutes from the October twenty-fifth meeting. Anyone have any corrections or changes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Mark. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second action item is a request to waive the impact fees from Robert and Mary Ann Bartlett, thirty-six Snow Road, map eleven lot fifteen. Everyone received the information in their packet. I'll ask Brian if he has anything he'd like to add at this time.
I guess I'll just add that in doing my research on this, I spoke to the town attorney, asked him what cases, I guess, could fall under possible waivers and which instances have been possibly contested in courts regarding waivers of impact fees. And what he had said to me was that there are cases where if intent has been shown that they wanted to develop even though it had... This is a case where a house was demolished back in like two thousand and six and they had intended to rebuild it at the time. They went forward and got a special exception. They, you know, had plans to build it. They just weren't able to actually do it based on economic reasons or whatever they were back then. They weren't able to do it. And so, you know, they let that approval lapse and they let the permit lapse and whatever else they had. So I guess what the town attorney was saying is that intent was... It did exist based on, you know, they showed intent of wanting to rebuild right away. They just weren't able to due to economic reasons. So this could be considered a case to waive it. Whereas normally when a house is torn down and rebuilt right away, we don't charge an impact fee because it's not a new impact on the town. But in this case, because it had been vacant for so long, I had made the determination that an impact fee should be charged. So they're asking for a waiver based on section sixteen-six-four that the... If the planning board can find that the subject property had been previously assessed for its proportionate share of public capital facility impacts or has contributed payments or constructed capital facility capacity improvements equivalent in value to the dollar amount of the fee waived.
Why did they need a special exception, Brian, from the zoning board?
It was a non-conforming lot. And so due to the non-conformity of the lot, they needed the special exception to be able to develop the lot after the house is torn down. It's considering... It's considered developing a lot when you tear down the house, leaving it essentially... You're rebuilding fully a new house on that lot. And so the town's policy has always been to require a special exception in that case.
According to the ZBA, if I can, Mr. Chair, the ZBA published notice that's in our packet. The special exception was required to erect a single-family residence on a non-conforming lot that has approximately one point three acres, whereas two acres is required. The existing... This was the original notice. The existing single-family residence will be demolished and replaced. That was in two thousand and five. I can't... The acreage, I'm assuming, is the same.
But my question goes to the... To the timing. If in two thousand and five, they were given permission to remove the house and build a new one, they did not need a special exception at that time?
No, they did.
They did?
And they got it and it lapsed. And then now they've come back and they've been re-granted a...
So they probably changed the footprint of what they wanted.
Earlier this year.
I have a question.
Please, Barbara.
One of the reasons this exemption exists in the zoning ordinance is because there's a finding made that the lot owner has contributed payments or constructed capital facility improvements equivalent in dollar value to the amount of the fee waived. There hasn't been a structure on this house since... On this lot arguably since two thousand and five, it would appear, based on the record in this. Do you have any record of what the property taxes have been assessed on this lot since, let's say, two thousand and four, when we know there was a structure on it and then subsequently?
And I...
I asked him this.
Thank you for calling me ahead of time and asking that.
I don't know what the answer is.
Because I wouldn't be able to answer unless you did call me. So I do have the information. And I went back to two thousand and six. At that time, it was assessed for a hundred thirteen thousand dollars in value and the taxes would have been five thousand two eighty-eight, forty.
So it was not assessed with a structure on it in two thousand and six? At a hundred and thirteen thousand, that would have been...
That was with the structure, actually.
It was?
Now, after the... The next year, two thousand and seven, was when it dropped. Because they do it based on if there's a structure there on April first. So in two thousand and five... April first of two thousand and five, when it was taken down... After, it was already... It was still there. Anyway. So the next one dropped to sixty-four-four, sixty-four thousand four hundred.
The assessment.
After it was demolished.
For how many years?
And then it sort of hovered between sixty-four-four and went up to seventy-three-one for a few years. And now it's at fifty-seven-four, fifty-seven thousand four hundred. And the associated taxes with that are roughly fifteen hundred, thereabouts. They differ based on the actual tax rate, but...
Annually, fifteen hundred is what you're saying.
Yes.
So if there was... When there was a house on it, based on a two thousand and five tax rate, they were paying about fifty-two-hundred a year?
Right.
And for seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven...
And twelve.
And twelve. For five years now, they've been paying fifteen hundred or five, thirty-five... Six years, they've been paying about thirty-six hundred dollars a year less.
Yes, yes.
Because it's been assessed as a vacant lot.
Because it's been assessed as a vacant lot.
Essentially.
Okay. As compared to having paid property taxes towards... On the value of the house?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for getting that information.
So does it meet the criteria in sixteen point six point four?
My position would be no. They have clearly saved more than the amount of the impact fees by having it assessed as just a lot since the house was demolished. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have rules for when these things get assessed and how soon you're supposed to rebuild.
Mark.
Yeah, I thought Barbara was going in one direction and one different one, but I'm wondering about the definition of this under sixteen dot six dot four. It says, "Or has contributed payments equivalent in value." What payments would that be? Does that include property taxes? Would they be included in those payments?
And under my analysis, you pay property taxes for the value of your land... Your assessment is based...
That sounds like my question. My question is, under this definition, "Or has contributed payments," would property taxes paid be included in these payments under this definition? If so, then I'd say, yeah, they've paid seventy-five-hundred in the last six years plus the five thousand previous to that. They've paid way more than this eighty... Eight hundred dollars in impact fees. I would think it qualifies for this exemption.
Anybody else have a comment? Phil?
Regardless of whether there's a structure on the property or not, you still have the basic taxation for the land. So that should be irregardless of what's the calculation. Because you're talking about a structure, you're not talking about the land value.
How do you view it, Mr. Administrator?
I was viewing it from the standpoint of abandonment, essentially, where, you know, abandonment is kind of generally termed as, you know, if you abandon a use within one... For more than one year, it's considered abandoned. Obviously, the house was taken down for, you know, six years. And that was why I had initially put on the permit that they needed to pay the impact In coming in and talking to people in our office, I don't know if it was... I believe it was Patty that they spoke to. They had gotten the message that, you know, it wouldn't be charged because there had been a house there before. And that has... That is how we've treated other houses where they've taken them down. But it's sort of been other houses that have been taken down and rebuilt right away. And this is a different case than those. And so, you know, I don't know... In this case, the message kind of got a little convoluted. And they believed one thing and we put on their permit another thing. And they got all the way through building their house and didn't realize that that was the case. And now they're ready for obtaining a COO and they don't have a... They weren't prepared to do the eight thousand dollars worth of impact fees, but...
I don't think you can hold any town employee liable for that statement because they were assuming that you were going to build the house. They were not assuming that the resident was going to leave the lot vacant for the next six years and then still be able to come back in.
And I'm not saying anything is Patty's fault.
Oh, I read it in the memo and I want to be sure that it's understood that the letter from the applicant states, they were told twice from town clerks, they were told no impact fees. That was based on them planning to rebuild in a timely fashion. Our people never had any information that they were going to go on six years and not do it. You can't... Those statements are not germane to the process.
And I don't have any proof one way or the other of what was said. I mean, it was purely a discussion of, you know, what someone said or what they didn't say. And so I don't know what the facts are in that regard. But that's why I called up the town attorney and I asked him, you know, okay, what do we do in a case of abandonment? And he said, well, there are cases that, you know, are thrown out, that are considered still not abandoned because there's been proof that intent was there to rebuild. And so, you know, he said this would be one of those cases that you could look at it and grant a waiver. And so I still feel like it's up to the board to make that determination.
If the applicants had kept their zoning variance alive by going back and asking for continuance or whatever process were necessary, would this have even triggered this discussion? Was it because their permits and their zoning lapsed is what triggered this?
That's, I'm sure, part of it. I'm not sure if it's the whole part of it, but...
But it is a part of it?
Yeah.
And was it clearly stated on their notice decision that they had a certain timeframe that they had to act within to be in compliance with the notice of decision back in two thousand and six or whenever the first one was granted?
Their first special exception was for two years.
For two years. So there was a time limit and they knew it?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian, please.
Are there extensions available on that time limit you were just talking about? And the original building permit that they got, was that extended to this period or did they just get a new building permit all over again recently?
They actually... They didn't ever pull a formal building permit. What they had pulled was a demo permit to demo the house. And that was the only one that we had on file at the time. So there was... I think I may have said that there was a permit... They had a building permit that expired. I don't believe it was an actual permit. What they did have expire was their... Just their special exception. So did that answer your question?
Is there a process for extending that special exception? Like, can they come in and ask for extensions? You know, we get extensions all the time.
Yes, they can.
Okay.
And they did come back in to the town this... Earlier this year and reinstate that. And so, you know, they did that. They went through the construction after getting a permit and they built the house. And so...
When was the request made to reassess the property to land only?
It had been done right after the house was taken down.
The assessments, the impact assessments usually assessed and paid at the beginning when the permit is pulled or at the end when the COO is...
They're stated on the permit at the beginning. So when they pull a permit, it's clearly written on the permit, this is what your impact fee will be. And then they're paid at the end when you're going to get a certificate of occupancy.
And in this case, was it stated on the permit at the very beginning?
Yes.
And follow-up question. We're looking at sixteen dot six dot four. We talked earlier about the second half of the exception, but the first part says, "Planning Board May Waive the Assessment and the Fee Where It Finds That the Subject Property Had Has Previously Been Assessed for Its Proportionate Share." So do we know if this one's house was built in the past, was initially constructed, whether it was the twenties or fifties, wherever, if they paid an impact fee back then? Do you know?
Impact fees haven't existed for long enough for that to have occurred. So it wasn't previously assessed for an impact fee other than what we've currently asked No, it wasn't previously assessed.
You know that for factual.
Yeah. Yeah, it was back in the nineteen twenties or something when this house was built. Nineteen... I'm not sure. It was far enough back that we didn't have regulations back then.
Well, I just want to say to the board that every decision we make is going to have a decision down the road. So if we were to grant this waiver tonight based on the facts we have in front of us, we would be setting ourselves up for another situation where someone could do a demo and let their lot sit for five or six years and then come in and say, "We'd like our impact fees waived because you did it in the past." When clearly some of the fault for this situation falls upon the property owners for not renewing their variance in a timely fashion. It was clearly stated on the very first decision. You can be recognized a minute, sir. So there are some decisions here that are out of our hands, have to be considered by the board.
I have a question.
Let me...
Go ahead, Richard.
Richard, please.
I think conversely, too, we have to recognize that if we do not grant a waiver, the information that Brian got through the town attorney means that the applicants could choose to seek relief through the courts by the cases that the town attorney cited, saying that they had established intent. And then we've made them pay an impact fee so they can seek relief through the court. So converse to what you said, either one of those things could happen.
Provided the facts were the same, Richard, I would say. That's for lawyers to determine. Mark, you're next.
Yeah, you said earlier that if a house is rebuilt right away... Let's say that house had burned down on... Was it Elm Street or back Goshough Town Road last year? They didn't get assessed an impact fee when they were rebuilt, right?
No.
Because they did it, in your words, right away or... So what is the timeframe after which you would reassess an impact fee if a house burned down, was demolished and wasn't rebuilt right away? What's that timeframe after which you would start assessing a fee?
Well, my timeframe that I was following was one year based on the abandonment scenario.
Phil?
I think one thing that we have to consider that's very important here is that as long as there's a structure on a property, you pay... There's an assessment on a property that's taxed and the structure that's on there that's taxed. And what I would be very careful on is if we allow a person to come in and get a demo permit, who bought a property... Let's say in today's economy, you go out and you buy three properties that... You buy them from the bank. And you go in and come into the town and you say, "I'm going to knock these three buildings down." You do them one at a time. "I'm going to knock this building down and I'm going to build another house." You agree. You go through the process, you granted the demo permit, and you don't build a house. You take your next property, you do the same thing. So now you've bought three properties with three houses that you let them sit because your intent is to let them sit. You knock the buildings down so that you don't have to pay the taxes on the structure because we pay... The taxes are based on what the condition of the property is on April first. So if I am successful to demolish the property prior to April first and I go into the town and say, "There's no more structure on a property. I'm only going to pay for the land, vacant land." I let those properties sit and as I build, I come in and I build one house and I say, "I had the intent to build. I want them waived." This is one thing that we have to be careful that we don't create because there was a purpose of this. The intent is you replace an existing structure with another structure. And if you let it dormant and the property lapses, you lapse that use, you waive all your rights when it lapses.
At this time, I'm going to recognize the applicants to come up to the table. I'm sure they would like to address this from their point of view. So if you could identify yourself for the record, please, and...
Yes. Good evening. I'm Robert Bartlett.
Yeah, I'm Bartlett.
I just want to say that we aren't commercial builders. We're just individuals and we had intent to build on the lot. We went and got permission to demolish and rebuild. We got as far as demolishing and we were not financially able to go ahead with the second half. That did lapse. We did come back and we went through the process again and we got permission to build. At no point did anybody ever say it was an expiration time that we had to build or we would be charged impact fees. We were always told from the beginning that because there was a house there, we wouldn't be charged. And even when I went back to get the building permit to construct the new house that's up now, the fees were listed on there and I questioned the clerk and I said, "What is this? We weren't supposed to be charged." And she said, "Oh, that's right. There was a house there before, right?" And I said, "Yes." She goes, "You don't have to worry about that." So I paid my building permit and we constructed it and now we refuse the CO.
Did you allow your zoning notice to lapse? Did you keep your zoning... Special exception alive the whole time?
We were always in the law on that.
Right, and we applied for a new special exception.
At the end of the two-year period from when the first one expired?
Yes, we applied and got... Right this year, we got a special exception to build. We had to go again before the board and get a special exception. So it was a second one. It wasn't just the first one. We were granted a special exception so we could build.
And you had the first one in two thousand and six, right?
I don't remember the date on the first one, but the...
Somewhere thereabouts.
So that would have expired approximately two years later?
Right.
According to the notice of decision.
We had kind of half of it done. We had the demolishing part done.
So at the end of the two-year period, you do understand that when you don't renew it, that it expires?
No doubt.
Well, it's on the decision was part of your paperwork that you received from the zoning board.
Well, we did have to come back and renew it before we built and we did.
It seems that if you had gone in and renewed your special exception and kept it alive, then you certainly would have fell under the criteria that you're talking here tonight. But once you lost your special exception the first time, that's kind of a game changer, in my opinion. I'm not a lawyer.
We got a second special exception and it wasn't like we blatantly disregarded the fees on there. He questioned the fees and was told, "No, you do not have to pay the fee." It wasn't like, oh, she's in...
We understand that.
You know, it was... We went ahead and built on the assumption that there were no fees as far as the impact fees. And now here, the building is... We would not have built had we had paid almost nine thousand dollars. We just don't have the money into it for that. And so now here we are. We don't have the money to... There's no way to recoup this. There's no... And, you know, we thought we fell under the criteria as in looking... We talked to Brian about it after and he said to look at the rules, sixteen point whatever it was there. And we felt that we were under the criteria of that. We're not trying to set a new precedent. We're trying to see what's fair in this particular situation.
Brian, what's your opinion on the fact that the zoning special exception expired? Did that... Is that a game changer or is that a matter of inconsequence?
Could I just comment that I think that's putting Brian in an impossible situation?
Well, he is the zoning administrator.
And he's made a recommendation to us. You've picked a specific fact in this particular case and he stated what he based his assessment on. And I'm just saying that I'm worried because people seem to be tying this back to legal opinion. And I can tell you that every lawyer has a different opinion of everything and I don't agree with the assessment that's been made as represented. And I think there are a number of points I could raise tonight to indicate why it's not applicable, including the ZBA approval, which never references the fact that there's a previous house on the lot. The ZBA approval was based completely on a lot, not reconstruction of a house. So, I mean, Brian, can you answer? I would just say that I don't think that's a fair question for Brian. I think that's a factor for this board to consider and this board can frankly always waive a rule. You've got the power in any application to do that.
Still want me to answer?
Well, you don't have to, Brian, because Barbara's correct. If you're on the spot, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do as you please, but as long as you understand we're not trying to put you on the spot.
I'll let it be what I've said, though.
Anybody else have anything else they want to add to this? Anything else from you folks at this time?
Just again, to reiterate that we were never told of any timeline for the impact fee part of it.
We were told specifically that there would be no fee.
Right.
That has a great bearing on whether we would have built this house. The house is sold. There is no way to regroup this money.
Okay.
You know? And as far as the impact on the town, I'm not sure how that works. You know, there's been no impact. I don't even know where to begin with that.
Okay.
Just asking that you...
Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the impact fees.
We're going to ask these folks to step back. Okay? Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Richard, you're up.
I'd like to make the motion to waive the impact fees.
I'll second that.
Motion by Richard to waive the impact fee totaling eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, Richard? As shown on the...
Yes.
Memo?
And on the... And in our packet on the building permit application that issued in June.
Seconded by John Michael. Now, what did you just say, Barbara?
I just asking to clarify that you were clarifying that it was on the memo and I was clarifying that it was on the building permit that's in our packet that was issued on June twenty-second. That amount is also there.
Okay. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Richard's motion, say aye.
Aye.
So that's three? Okay. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Five. So the motion- Oh, Samona's not voting, I apologize. Four. I'm sorry, I put her hand up.
I didn't include you. Sorry.
So it's four, three, and the motion fails. You are not, your waiver has not been granted.
No. The request is for a waiver, the waiver wasn't granted.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is map three, Lot 37-1-2, time extension, request hearing to request more time to build an approved 8,921 square foot multi-unit building for DVD Real Estate Lamy Drive, Daniel Plummer Road. This, I believe is Dennis Gerard, correct? Brian?
Yes.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to this, Brian, before we begin discussion?
Only that we've seen this one before, and-
Can you tell us how many times this has been extended?
It's been extended ever since May, well, it was conditionally approved on May 25th, 2006.
Okay.
And it's been extended ever since then, so that's about six years.
Okay.
And the request is still the same, that they haven't been able to come up with the funding to actually build it, so.
Is that in the form of a letter?
I'm not sure if it was in a attached application.
Is the applicant here tonight, Brian? Dennis here?
Yes, yes.
Good. We'll let you come on up, Dennis. Since you're here in person, you can speak to the fact that what you'd like extended, yeah?
Yes.
Dennis Gerard. Well, you could've said your own name, I suppose, I'm glad. You've been here so many times, we all know you.
Well, I'm asking for the extension again, and it's not because of the lack of financing. Everything up until now is in place. The issue is not meeting the bank's criteria for the number of rental units pre-rented prior to building. If I could meet that, then the funds will be dispersed and I could apply for the building permit. So that's where we stand right now. Really like to continue with it, but, you know, I've owned the land for 29 years, I believe, I've been paying taxes on it.
Right.
And I wanna do something with it.
Right.
I just need to find businesses to rent it.
Okay.
Some of it is rented. I just need to find one more renter to move along with the project.
Thank you, Dennis. Brian, are there any changes to our zoning regulations that would affect a decision this evening? Changes to affect this plan?
No.
Got that? Anybody have any questions at this time?
Questions?
Any questions from the board? Barbara?
I note that the time extension request from last year talked that the building permit or site work is paid for by the applicant as to a staff review to show that it complies with the current zoning ordinance and development regulations. So I'm glad you asked that question, Tim, because it raised the question in my mind, and I suspect I was here for that meeting, and I don't remember the specifics. That is, do we have any suspicion that there is something in our zoning ordinance or our development regs would apply that this plan no longer complies with?
I brought something up at one of the time extension requests, and we required some of our drainage to try to be onsite, impervious drainage.
Right, and that's referenced in-
I brought that up at a meeting, and it was determined that the soil types here were not conducive to that type of drainage, so we were not going to force that issue.
Okay, so the closed drainage system and whatever the wetland impact is, is all still in compliance with our ordinances and whatever permits you would need from the state?
Correct. As far as I know, yes.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Megan Theriot, town engineer. Would you come on up to the, bring us up here?
I just, I had recently pulled up the plan for the site because it's been a while since I had actually looked closely at it. And one thing that I noticed when I pulled up the plan was the seasonal high water table is high, which relates to why you said we can't do infiltration on the site because the seasonal high is about two feet down below finished grade. But one of the things I noticed is the detention system for that site is closed pipe, 36-inch pipe, buried about a foot. And it raised some concern for me just from some other projects that had come up. The buoyancy that can happen from two feet of water on a 36-inch watertight pipe. So I had called just to confirm, make sure it wasn't an issue, I called a supplier of ADS pipe and just explained the situation. That was 36-inch pipe and where the water table was. And he said there was some concern, it's nothing insurmountable, but there may need to be a minor design change because doing a quick buoyancy calc, he said that the cover over the pipes in the plan may not be enough. It's only 12 inches, it may need to be at least 18, so that there isn't a problem with hydrostatic uplift, I think they call it. So if you extend it, I just didn't know if you could maybe make a note that the drainage system would be confirmed to be watertight and maybe something about a buoyancy calculation to just determine that the system would be installed properly.
And when you looked at the grades on the plan, can he accomplish that without defeating the plan's design?
In the back corner is where the system is, and it would need to raise, like I said, the quick numbers he gave me over the phone were possibly another six inches, which didn't sound like that big of a deal. But he said the one foot of cover probably wouldn't be enough on the system right now. I don't think it'd be a huge deal, but obviously, you know, that affects some things back there, and I might have to adjust some minor stuff. I'm not saying he needs a new site plan or anything like that, I just didn't know if it could be added into an approval. And then when it gets built, at least we have that note there, and we can reference it and make sure that it gets installed properly. I just don't wanna install a system that could be an issue, so.
What's on top of the system right now, Meg? Is that paving, parking area?
It shows, from what I could tell, the detail looked like 12 inches, not including the pavement. And when I talked to the guy from ADS, he said typically you could include concrete, but you can't include pavement because it's flexible. And he said the 12 inches was not enough, it should be around 18, but he was in the car driving home and didn't have the numbers in front of him. So he just said, "Quick numbers, I think it'll be about 18 inches." He said he could do a formal calc for me and get back to me, or he said for now, just maybe make a note for tonight's meeting and I could follow up with-
But since it is pavement, if he were to raise the pavement six inches, is that gonna shed water back to the building? Is that gonna have a detrimental effect on the site?
He wouldn't raise it, he would actually bury the pipe further down, right?
No.
Well, not with the two-foot water table.
I don't know if it's that easy, because you're already in the water table, two feet, so you'd be in the water table even more. So, again, I didn't look at all the numbers to see what would happen if you raised that corner six inches. It can affect things in the sense that you might have to raise the whole site, you know, I don't know if you have to raise the whole site up six inches, or, I don't know.
Let me ask you this. I understand your concerns. Would it be fair to say that if the owner decided to go with the existing plan, and should buoyancy become a problem? It becomes his problem, it's on his site.
You can say that, it's just something I noticed, I was concerned about, and the ADS supplier confirmed that it could, that didn't sound like a proper design. So that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, it is a private site, private system, but I just wanted to bring it up as a concern instead of just ignoring it and saying, "Oh, well, I don't care."
Do the board members have discussion on that matter?
Have there been any zoning regulations in the interstitial, you know, five years or whatever, that address exactly what you're talking about?
No.
Okay, so you're just talking about logistics?
It was just, it was just, I opened the plan, saw the two-foot, I remembered the seasonal high being high. And then I saw, I'm like, "Oh, what did I have for a drainage system?" I saw 36-inch pipe, I'm like, "Wait a minute, it's gonna be in the water table." And I just made a quick call to see if it was a concern, and it was, so I just wanted to bring that up tonight.
Phil?
Thank you. Megan, is that something, though, from what I'm gathering, and I don't have the site plan in front of me, if you're dealing with a 36-inch pipe, could that 36-inch pipe, your concern is that the pipe is into the water table. Could that pipe be replaced with two 24-inch pipes?
There's already six 36-inch pipes, actually, I think, on the road.
Okay, well, I was just-
There are other things I can do, more extreme, like if raising the site six inches didn't work. You, I think on one other site, we had a concrete pad, and you literally can like, you can like bolt the pipes down, you know what I mean, strap the pipes down? You can do stuff like that. You could possibly go to a 24-inch pipe, they'd need to be longer, so instead of, I don't know how long, I'll say 50 feet, say there's, you know, 650 foot, maybe you could go to 24-inch, but there are 75 feet or something. So there's different things that could be done. He was just saying quickly over the phone, the cover didn't sound like enough. So, again, I didn't come up with some new design for it all, I just am raising the concern, didn't know if something could be added to just make sure it gets installed properly, so we don't have a problem out there.
Dennis? Do you know how much reveal there is on your building in relation to the parking lot, off the top of your head?
I don't.
I mean, if you had a 12-inch reveal, you might be able to raise the parking lot slightly and do it. But if you have an eight-inch reveal, then you're talking about raising the entire footprint of the building to accommodate the height change in the parking lot.
Correct, you'd have to change the entire grade.
I don't know if the elevation views are in the plan set, I didn't-
Not that we, I don't think what we have here.
Because I mean, of course, they had to see-
Well, some of them, oh, no, they are.
They are.
They are here.
Like, does it show, like, the architectural view from the side, or have any of those-
Oh, no, no.
Any board members have any other comments, or Barbara?
I'm not, I have no interest in holding this up or not extending this because it complies with the regulations. He went through some effort to get this, you know, approved. However, there is a reason that there's an expiration date on plan approvals, and part of it is for our, you know, our regulations, to see if there's anything to show it. And part of it is for just what we talked about, because drainage systems have to be part of an approved plan, and we don't have regulations that specific, because that would not be typical in an ordinance. So I will make a motion to approve the time extension, and if the board looks at the time extension request that was done a year ago, that expired on November 22nd, I wouldn't have any problem with that motion with the addition that it says, that it complies with the current zoning ordinance and develop regulations, and that the drainage system is confirmed to be watertight, as, you know, because it's a staff review, and that any plans are changed as needed to reflect it. I don't, because the reality is, I don't wanna make Mr. Gerard do anything today if he can't build within the next, if he's back here in another year. I mean, I don't have any desire to make him go through the other calcs, but if there's a question about whether the drainage system is watertight, then I think that deserves review upon issuance of the building permit. So that would be my position.
I don't think it was a question of the drainage system being watertight, but-
The buoyancy.
A watertight system floating to the top, being in the water table.
Well, I think the, I wrote down what Megan said, and she said that the drainage system be configured to be watertight. And my guess is that in the land of DPW, configured to be watertight means within whatever this buoyancy thing that we're talking about, that's what I meant.
The whole reason for the detention system is to retain contaminants from the parking lot in the retention system.
Right.
So when it's empty and there's air in that system, when the water table rises around it, it's like a boat, it tends to wanna push up out of the parking lot, and that's what's being discussed here.
And my recollection is that there are other plans up there where we've had to deal with water table and detention issues because of the water in that area. So that's why I think it should simply be added as a condition, and if it needs, if it's fine, then there's nothing else that needs to be done, and if something needs to be changed, it can just be done as they build.
Well, the only condition we're adding then, Barbara, is we're asking him to redesign his site from an approved site plan. Because if he does have to raise the cover on the system, he has to, everything else goes with it.
Well, but maybe he won't. I think that was the point.
Well, it's being expressed by the town engineer that six inches of cover is inadequate, which means he has to increase the cover or tie the structures down, which is cost prohibitive, I can tell you that.
I guess that's why they come back for review, in my opinion.
All right, so you have a motion to-
No, I haven't, I said I'd be inclined.
You'd be willing to make-
I started to, but I asked, told the board that I was looking at the other-
You can delete that whole thing.
-motion, and we'll see if anybody else wants to jump in and do anything.
All right, any more discussion, or do you wanna have a motion on this matter?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the extension and review this water drainage issue as it comes up.
Review it.
This pipe issue, what Megan was talking about.
So you're stating the review would be required as part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any second on John's motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Barbara. Phil, do you wanna discuss it?
I have a question, and it's a concern. Because if this is gonna be a condition of his approval, it's very possible until that, that that could definitely affect his financing. Because even though we don't require him to have an approved plan, because he has an approved plan, we're putting a condition on the plan that technically is not approved. So when Mr. Gerard goes for financing, and the way the financing world is today, he has to, has, has, as he mentioned, he has to have the signed leases by the proposed tenants in order for the income of those leases to be considered for his financing, and technically he doesn't have an approved plan. So it may completely kill the deal.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor of John's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Richard?
I did not.
So it's a three-three tie, so the motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the time extension for one year.
Seconded, I seconded the motion.
With no conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Motion by, you got him? Okay. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no. Abstentions? No abstentions. So you have a one-year extension, Dennis.
Thank you.
Just as a note, Dennis, before you leave, the town engineer's recommendations are for your benefit, not to try to hurt you, so that if you can, so that if you see your way clear to look into it on your own, to protect your own investment, that would be, that's up to you to decide. You don't want the drainage system coming through the pavement. At our next application, our next application is a conceptual site plan for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts. Pay attention to the board, please. This is a proposed site plan for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts with drive-thru and ATM kiosk, 6 South Mass Street. Property owner is Teresa Golding, RSBO1. For anybody who's not familiar, the property is on the left side of the new Cumberland Farms that is currently under construction. We have seen this in conceptual form once before, for those members that have been here prior to this, and some of you have not. So I'm gonna let Brian try to give a brief overview before we get started. So I'm going to let Brian try to give a brief overview before we get started.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Essentially, this is a project, as you stated, that was submitted in conceptual form only to the board previously. It never did materialize after that. However, due to circumstances that Dunkin' Donuts has now been pushed from the Cumberland Farms building. They're in search of a location. So they're back, and they're proposing the same site. Really, the site plan hasn't changed from what it originally was. However, some of, as I stated, the Cumberland Farms project to the west has changed, so, you know, that might change some of the dynamic of how this plan all works within the residential and commercial neighborhood, directly abutting the property. Hopefully, you've had a chance to go through the conceptual comments that we raised as staff members. Planning wrote several comments, and then fire, engineering, and police all provided comments as well. I'd like to kind of allow the applicant to first make their presentation before we get into discussing any of the comments. So...
Brian, is this proposed conceptual site plan allowed in the zone, or will it require a zoning decision?
It will require zoning variance. They are not, it's not a permitted use in the RSBO1 district. So they're working on going to the zoning board, most likely in December.
Question?
Barbara?
Our package said they were going in November. So what happened to that, and if I can sort of ask, why are we seeing this? If they don't, I mean, I get the conceptual, but I sort of saw the application going to the ZBA next week, and I sort of thought that it was all sort of at about the same time, but now we're talking December, so why are we seeing this?
The plan had been to try to get on the November agenda, and they didn't make it. So...
Okay.
We're pushing it to the December.
So, before we begin, then, would, are you, are you asking, Barbara, that this be a more brief presentation than a long-winded presentation that has not been approved by zoning at this point?
I would never accuse an applicant of being long-winded.
I just said it because I say things, and I don't worry about what I say some things.
Maybe myself on the board, but never an applicant, just as the applicant is aware. And I need to say that I come to this with some advantage, because I have seen this before. But we did get the project narrative, and I would like to hear, you know, hear the application, but there are quite a few comments, and I guess my point would be that we're starting to get into the...
Meat and potatoes.
The meat and potatoes, the nitpicking things of the plan with some of those review comments. And from a conceptual standpoint, I'm not sure that that's appropriate at this point. I would also say that I'm a little, I would really want to see the new station, the new building that we approved next door and the layout as compared to what's here now, because the building that's going up and the footprint on that lot is going to be substantially different than how it is on this plan. So I just think from a board perspective, that will be, that will be important for me to see, so...
Is that showing the situation prior to the demolition of the...
That does not exist.
And actually, part of that's my fault, I was supposed to have gotten, Chris, a copy of the plan, and I forgot about it. So that was something that they had been requested to do a little, a little while back, and I...
Okay.
I should have gotten them the plan, but I didn't.
I mean, I'm just...
There's still time for that.
This isn't the last time we're going to see this, so I'm just saying that we will, I think I need to see that. So anyways, those are just my comments.
Okay. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Chris Rice, I'm with TF Moran, an engineering firm in Bedford, New Hampshire. And with me tonight is Rosanna Francis, she's with R.E.M. Central, the developer looking at the project. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. We just wanted to come before the board to get any initial feedback on the project. Any comments, concerns from the board members, as well as the public. We do intend to meet with the abutting neighbors. I'm not sure yet if it's going to be a one-on-one, or if we'll set up a group meeting to get their comments and concerns if they're not expressed at this meeting. But the project is located at 6 South Mass Road. As Brian mentioned, in the RSBO1 zoning district, so we would require a variance for the use. We were initially targeting the November hearing, but after hearing that the plan had previously come before, and that there was some concern over the project in the past, we thought that it might be more beneficial to take the time to come before the board conceptually, hear what comments and concerns the board has, as well as the neighbors, before we made an application to the zoning board. But we would like to try to get a feeling tonight for if the planning board is receiving the project favorably, would, you know, have a favorable recommendation of the zoning board adjustment, or if we're climbing up a steep hill type of thing. So what is shown on the plan right now is a 2,300 square foot approximately Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through, as well as a 96-square-foot ATM kiosk with associated parking and site improvements. This plan right now shows 33 parking spaces, where 37 are required by the parking requirements. However, there is a statement in those regulations that says the planning board has the authority to waive five of the spaces. There's a potential, we may ask for that waiver, this plan would require that waiver. However, I've massaged the plan a little bit to gain a couple extra parking spaces to where I believe that I would not need that waiver. However, taking into account some of the staff comments, such as a potential cross connection, things of that nature, that could possibly hinder a couple of my parking spaces. So it's possible that I may be requesting a waiver for a couple of parking spaces for this project. We think it's a reasonable request, given that for this type of establishment, it's really about 70 to 80 percent of their businesses is drive-through oriented. They don't really have as much park, get your coffee and stuff, and go. It's much more drive-through oriented. Just to give you a little bit of background of what we've done so far, we did have a preliminary meeting with Brian. At his recommendation, we went before the TRC committee earlier this week, informally, again, just to get their comments and concerns. I did go to the Economic Development Council last night. Unfortunately, they didn't have a quorum, but it seemed like everybody felt it was a good project. I am happy to go through the comments from the conceptual letter. I don't know what the board's pleasure is, if you'd like me to kind of just address them. I know that, I don't want to take up too much of the board's time. I could open it up to questions, I could address some of these comments. Most of them, I feel like we can address. We have spoken to the fire department and the police department. The only other waiver that I'm aware of right now that we'll be requesting from this board would be for the driveway width, because the regulations require a maximum of 24 feet. Their particular delivery trucks do not require anything larger than, say, a FedEx-type size vehicle, but in speaking with the fire department, they'd obviously like to be able to maneuver the site, and their ladder truck turning movements are going to dictate pretty much what I can do for the turning radiuses on the pavement, as well as the entrance. Also, at that meeting, it was due to traffic concerns. The general consensus was that for this particular site, it would make sense not only to have an in-and-out drive, but to have an in-drive, a left-turnout dedicated lane, and a right-turnout dedicated lane, which would not be possible with a 24-foot driveway. So that's how we're intending to approach it. It would, the driveway width would be very similar to what is shown on this plan. It's just not striped to dictate a right-out and a left-out dedicated lane, but it would be very similar to this. Again, with that, I can open up to questions, or go through a couple of the comments from the memo, if that's the pleasure of the board, or...
Brian, do you think the comments on the memo should be held back until they meet them, and then we don't have to discuss them? Because those are nothing that we're going to comment on. If the fire department needs something for them to address, let's let them work it out, and let them come back to us.
It's purely the pleasure of the board. I mean, I tried to provide a little bit more of a detailed review, just as an upfront courtesy to them, to help them kind of understand where I might be coming from, from the planning standpoint.
Unless the board wants to discuss the memo, I think if it's administrative, we should let them handle it and get it, and let them take care of it. No? Mark?
I do have a comment on the memo. It just seems to me that it may not be appropriate to put in writing suggestions like, it would be really, it would look really great to have a trellis or a shade structure. Ask you guys to put in a pocket park for public art. I can see that in a verbal conversation, he can take notes. But unless we do that with every single applicant, it seems a little bit over the top on sort of micromanaging their project.
Okay. Phil, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had two questions, if it's... One is, do you know the elevation difference between the parking lot towards looking at, looking at this, the lower left-hand corner that is next to the Knoll Crest Road? The elevation difference between the pavement in the parking lot of the proposed site and the Knoll Crest Road pavement, what the elevation difference is?
I don't know what it will be exactly, because we haven't done a grading design yet. I can tell you that right now, at Mass Road, right now, about where the entrance is, from there to the back of the site is about a six-foot grade difference. I haven't done a full survey yet, and this is just based on some reference information, but it appears to be about six, six and a half feet. I'm going to be dictated elevation-wise for the site, based off of where I'm accessing off of, so it would be Mass Road. So they'll be filling the site to the rear. I would assume by the time that you're at the back, there'd probably be a four-foot change between, say, Knoll Crest elevation and that rear edge of the parking.
Okay.
Once I get into final design, should it go that far, then I can speak more intelligently to that, but that would be my guesstimation at this point.
And my second question was just on the, basically, the design of the, of the structure. In the package, there were two photographs that are on here, but I guess my question was a little bit more specific as to what types of architectural have you done around the country, perhaps towards Greek revival, or something similar to this area?
Yes, I can tell you that the applicant had had a prior study done to try to identify similar architectural features in town, and come up with a building that matched what's currently in the area. This is, I apologize, I meant to show this during my presentation, but this is a general idea of what the building is, what we're proposing. It's asphalt shingled roof, composite siding, composite siding, and vinyl clapboard trim. The colors, you know, we can fluctuate a little bit, but this is, this is the store that they, that we just had approved and just started construction in Auburn, New Hampshire. So it'd be very similar architecturally to this. Obviously, we could take any comments into account, but I can bring this a little closer if it helps you to...
No, 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 I was just...
I would just say that brick goes with everything, and Bedford gets brick Dunkin' Donuts, and I think that would be nice.
Did you hear that?
I did.
Well, I'm going to follow up on Phil's question about the rear elevation in the parking lot.
Okay.
Because I, at a, last time this was here for conceptual, I asked for two things. I asked for a cross connection between the existing gas station site and the proposed development of this site, and there were some concerns about interrupting the queuing, as I remember, as an answer. And I don't know that Cumberland and Duncan want to share coffee customers. I think that could be a problem business-wise.
Yeah.
The other thing I brought up was a rear driveway that exits onto Knoll Crest Road. That would make a, that'd be a great way to relieve the traffic on Mass Street, not Mass Road. That is Mass Street.
It's actually South Mass Street.
If Al Gammons was here, he'd be telling us four, seven, four or five times. So anyway, so the, once again, I was, it was told to me that having a rear driveway to Knoll Crest was also going to interrupt the queuing for the drive-up line. I would really like to see a way for people to be able to exit that parking lot onto Knoll Crest, to get out to Mountain Road, to take a portion of the traffic out of the intersection where Mass Street meets your parking lot, if that's at all possible. It would be a big help for the traffic flow.
Sure, I could definitely take a look at that. I guess to first address, we did receive the comment from Brian about the cross connection, and we are going to, that's part of tying into getting their plan, so I can see where it makes sense to possibly do that, how it impacts their site versus ours, and could we make it work? But we are going to explore that option. The Knoll Crest one, when we had the TRC meeting, the fire department had only requested a pedestrian access. They didn't want a full access, which is different than your comment. But I guess I could take a look at that, if, would it address your comment, if it was an exiting lane only?
That was a stated, that was stated by the fire department, they did not want a driveway back there?
That they didn't need driveway access, no.
They didn't need one?
They did not need one.
Well, needing and wanting are two different words.
Well, I, I don't know if I can say that they didn't, if it was stated, don't want or don't need, but they said that they would be fine with the layout as, as with just the pedestrian access. But I will take your comment into account and say, if I could address it, because I would be concerned if it was a full entrance for interrupting the queuing, but if it was purely an escape lane, that might, would that be, that satisfy the concern, I guess?
I just think there's a lot of people that live in town that may be coming down off of that part of the town. It would, would not have to enter Mass Street to enter all that traffic to get in and out, where they could use the rear exit, and it might end up improving the business in the long run, I don't know. I'm not...
Do you think you would prefer, I mean, if you had the choice between the cross access and the back, would you prefer the back?
Personally, I think the back would be advantageous.
I don't, if I can just follow up on that. Based on the size of the building that was approved on that lot, and how close it comes to the sidelines, the only, which...
Yeah.
The building that was approved on the gas station comes really close to the setback lines, and the only place you'd be able to do a cross-through at this point is right in the front of the lot, which doesn't, which potentially causes more chaos than anything else is going to. I mean, you need to put the new design and plan on it, but my recollection of that site plan is that that room that you see is gone.
I was not a proponent of the cross connection, I just brought it up at it prior.
Right, but I mean, it's mentioned in a couple of things, I'm just raising that for when...
I think you made an excellent point earlier, we need to see the, we need to kind of see it all as one piece, to see even if it's viable.
Exactly.
Okay.
Another point on here is the sidewalk you show.
Yes.
Brian, did we, did we allow Cumberland Farms to eliminate the sidewalk in front of their property on Mass Street because of where that telephone pole was located, in the middle of that sidewalk?
We kept it.
It's in still.
Yeah.
So this, this sidewalk would connect to that sidewalk?
Yes.
Good, because I didn't want that to be the sidewalk to nowhere.
In fact, right now, what they've done, what they're doing is they're building a flush sidewalk, flush to the road, because they, they don't have really enough room to go up and back down before they get to the property line. So that's one of the things that, you know, we may be discussing with them, as far as if they can get, if these guys can get far enough along in the process before they build their sidewalk, which I don't know if that can happen or not. They may have to go back and redo some of the sidewalk to, you know, make it all match up right.
And did they move that telephone pole, Brian, or are they going around it? What are they doing with that pole that's in the middle of the sidewalk right there?
That was going to be moved to the backside.
Okay, good.
I spoke to Brian about this, should our project proceed? I don't think it would happen timing-wise, because they'll be done early next year, but should our project move forward, we would do the tip-up, the seven-inch reveal is requested by DPW, and run the sidewalk from that corner down through the frontage of our property.
Anybody else?
I have two. I appreciate that your folks are, you know, considering the aesthetics of the project and going with a, with a Greek Gothic revival style, a Greek style, and I think that, I think brick is really good, too. I think you'll find that a lot of the commercial buildings in this area from that era are, are brick. I think it's a really good idea. And when I look at this plot plan right here, I see a lot of impervious surfaces, and I'm wondering what the concept is for the drainage. And I'm wondering if the sewage in this area can accommodate all of the drainage and the runoff for all the surface here.
That's an excellent question, and I can try to answer. That was one of the comments from the engineering department, and I haven't gotten into the drainage design, obviously, but as with any site, I will be required to match my pre-imposed flows. So for this particular project, I, I've been, know that there's really no outlet for the drainage at Knoll Crest Road. It's more of a percolation system. So I would probably end up with, at this southerly corner, an underground detention system that infiltrates the water and also has a controlled outlet to mimic or decrease the flows that are going to Knoll Crest at this time. So I haven't gotten into that full design, but that's typically how you'd handle it for this type of a site. We do test pits, make sure we can infiltrate, and run all the drainage calcs to prove that we do not increase stormwater runoff from our property.
Is that one of our regulations, Brian, that their pre-development runoff cannot exceed their post-development runoff?
Yes.
I thought so.
I think it's state-logs, unless you get an easement from your, from the downstream, the person that's receiving the flow.
Sure. This is a low area, it has flooded before, and there's a Masonic Lodge... This is a low area, it has flooded before, and there's a Masonic Lodge down here, it was underwater a couple of years ago.
So I, we will definitely take all that into account, and once, I need to get the soils information and do the pre, what exists today, design, find out where my discharge points are, and then do the proposed design to figure out where I'm at and what I need to do to mitigate it. But that would be part of my design.
I'm wondering why you're, you're adding a kiosk into this project, is there, is that a fair question to ask? The ATM kiosk?
Sure.
Income? I mean, not to be, but we actually have a whole project where we're seeking to put ATM kiosks on a lot of our properties, so it really just is kind of just a use of space.
Well, my question would go to our traffic issues. If, if it's Dunkin' Donuts, people are coming to buy coffee and donuts. If you're adding a kiosk for ATM, you're adding additional people that may come there just to use the kiosk, so the traffic counts are going to be different than, than the Dunkin' Donuts site.
We actually, I believe, I want to say we do have maybe one or two locations that have it, I could certainly bring in some data, or we could put together kind of what, what we've seen in terms of the combination, but, you know, it's definitely something that we're trying to do at all, at all of our locations, just to maximize space and income to the property.
I'd just like to note that this is an exceptionally busy road that's already a traffic nightmare, so adding more people that are going to use the ATM kiosk in addition to the Dunkin' Donuts, I think is just a consideration that I wanted to bring up at this meeting.
Do you think maybe it's, it's also a placement? I mean, do you think there might be a better place, or just, just conceptually, just being there?
The fact, the fact that it's there.
Further comment?
Barbara?
Just based on the elevations of the site, I'm not sure who would see the ATM as they went by the site. I'd, I'd be curious if you presented in the plan what the elevations are, because based on what I'm looking at and what I sort of remember as the contours of the site, that would have no street visibility, or very little, so that would lead me to an inquiry about what kind of signage you were talking about, because I think you're going to have to deal with signage issues in the RSBOD in addition to this. And then my other comment, I remember, looking at this again, based on the relative elevations of the site, which vary dramatically, as you pointed out, from the front to the back, I know you've got this, the six-foot stockade fence with evergreen hedge. I'll be sort of curious to know what the elevations are, how high the hedge would be, and how does it compare to the home next to it, because quite honestly, a lot of vehicles are over six feet now, and that's where your, your, your drive-through traffic lineup is going to be, so that's really going to be where you're sort of on, turned on in place vehicles are going to be, so I understand six feet is our ordinance in regards to the size of the fence, so that's why you picked it, but as to that side, depending on the aesthetics of the site and how the layout works, you might want to consider what you need to do on that side as compared to the other side, given the elevations.
Yeah, we can test it or kind of see what the, the real height.
I don't think you need to put like a balloon, like, you know, the towers that they do, but I'm just saying, I'm just looking at things to consider and...
No, no, we appreciate, that's why we're here, right, so we're trying to...
So that's what I'm just sort of trying to do, is give general comments about what I see.
I think what you're getting at, Barbara, is that fence and tree buffer, is that at the toe of the slope, or is that at the top of the slope? It makes a big difference. If you're going to fill four feet across that whole side to make your site work...
I'm on the pavement, I'll usually...
And now you're going to put up six feet, you're going to have to put a two-foot buffer. We, we ran into other issues in town with other screening things that we, we didn't really understand, and when we were presented, and we found we had some problems, so we will be looking at the screening as part of your landscape plan when that comes back.
Of course, yeah, and I'll know that better once I get the survey data, elevations of what, how everything is.
Brian?
Madam, just a quick question, please, is your, is your development company also the same company as developing the, the spot next door?
The Cumberland?
Mm-hmm.
No. No. No, we were, we had an agreement with Cumberland, but then the agreement ended, and so that's why now we've gone separate ways. But we own the Dunkin' Donuts on Mast Road, on 599 Mast Road, 100 Mast Road, those are ours.
Richard?
I like the materials you chose. I don't think, personally, I don't think brick fits in that area, so difference of opinion, and I got no issues whatsoever with an ATM kiosk.
I guess a clarification question I might ask, because nowadays with building materials, you can make the building look brick, but it's not actually real brick, is that, does the board have a preference, or do they lean one way or the other, or is it long as it looks good, looks like brick, feels like brick?
It doesn't have to be brick, just taking, there are no brick buildings surrounding it, it'd be the...
No, I'm just saying, if we were, if the general overwhelming consensus of the board was brick, I know you don't favor it, but if, if everybody else liked it, and we were going to go down that route, sometimes the composite materials that look exactly like brick are a little bit more financially feasible than doing an entire building out of pure brick. I didn't know if that would be a potential item to consider or not.
Do what you want. Board decision.
Or some brick features, I mean, I had included those images in your packet with, that had some brick features, maybe a base that has some brick, or maybe, you know, a vertical feature or something that has some brick, you know, something to give it some relief from the, you know, overall siding look, might be good.
Okay. And I did fail to mention, as part of the, aside from the use variance, we will be requesting signage variances from the ZBAs as well, just because in this particular zone, you're allowed one sign that's eight square feet, which we would probably be looking for a building sign as well as a monument-type sign at the entrance, so we would be requesting a variance to allow an additional sign as well as in excess of the eight-square feet, so that's our intent with zoning board.
Brian, are we in the Village Commercial District here or not?
No, RSBO one.
One, right, okay.
Sir, concerning what you just said about the signs, where would the street, the quote-unquote "street" sign go in this picture?
We haven't identified an exact location right at this point in time, but I would assume it'd be close to the edge of the pocket park, if you will, just west of the entrance, but once we get into doing like the sightline, plan of profiles, that may alter it a little bit as well. But that would be roughly our intent, somewhere along the frontage, and then one building sign that's most likely on the north side.
Good. Any other members have any questions or suggestions? John, you had a finger up.
I do, yeah, I've got a finger up, yes. Right across the street, you've got the funeral home, I think, and you've got the sidewalk, the, the road comes right to the road. Do you see any sort of, um, problems with traffic? Safety issues with the Mast Street at that point? It just seems like that's a real tight corner right there, and I'm, that's why I always notice when I come by it.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I know the area you're talking about, we will be doing a full traffic study, but until that's done, I really can't tell you what, what the impacts this development would be, because when, when you do something of this nature, you're going to be looking at kind of trips based on, and I'm not a traffic engineer, we do traffic engineers in-house, but there's, for instance, there's direct trips, and then there's pass-by trips, you know, direct trips are, or if I'm sitting at home and I decide I'm going to go out and get a coffee, that's me getting in my car specifically to go to this location, whereas pass-by trips are people that are already driving by the site that now that there's a coffee shop there, they're going to stop and turn, so all those things get taken into account with the traffic study, as well as their numbers from existing-sized stores and ITE trip generation data, et cetera, so we will take all that into account and see where that study leads us. We will be having a scoping meeting with the town engineer and any other town staff that would like to be part of that, to identify the parameters of, you know, which intersections we take a look at, counts, et cetera.
One way we can help with that, John, is on the request for the width of the entrance. If we can provide a wide enough entrance, even if it requires a waiver, so that the tractor-trailer that delivers the Dunkin' Donuts products can get in and out of there safely and doesn't have to drive up on the sidewalk to get in and out of there, that's a, that's something we can work on to help them with, if it's a safety issue that, that if we decide we want to work on it with them.
I can tell you that for the particular plan that you're looking at, I've run a WB-50, which is your typical tractor-trailer-sized vehicle through the site, and they do not go into the opposing lane or onto the sidewalk coming off, turning left into the site off Mast Road.
You say that.
Based on the driver, right?
Based on the print. We should pass out those papers to the truck drivers. Okay, anybody else have anything else for the applicants? I'd like to thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much for your time. I, I don't know if there's any butter, you had any questions, or is that not the...
It's a conceptual hearing, is there a public hearing?
I noticed.
We don't have a public hearing tonight, do we, Brian?
It's not a scheduled public hearing, although you could...
Okay, I was just asking, I'm sorry, because it was noticed, so I didn't know if...
It was noticed, I don't know if it was noticed.
It says it was noticed for a public hearing?
No, it was, it was noticed on our agenda. Is it listed under public hearings?
Well, we received a letter saying that it was a public...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not saying it was noticed as a public hearing, I'm just saying that all the butters were notified that the hearing, conceptual hearing was tonight, so I don't know if any of them showed up to comment.
Actually, they weren't.
Oh, they weren't? Oh, we submitted, okay, I apologize.
Did you...
We submitted a butters list, I thought that had to, I thought that that was the town process, but I apologize.
No, conceptual hearings are not usually formally noticed to butters.
Well, I would ask it, and if someone did come to the meeting tonight, if you have any questions or comments, if you would submit into the planning office in writing, then they could be brought up at a future meeting, or you can come to a future meeting and state your case at a, at an actual application hearing.
Well, thank you very much, as I, as I mentioned, we intend to go meet individually as well, so I should get those comments at that time, but again, our intent is to submit in the near future for the zoning board, I don't know, even though it's a conceptual hearing, if the board can give us some kind of idea of a favorable, that variance request, or is it...
Are you asking if we're going to approve it?
No, I'm not, not the site plan approval, I'm just saying, is it, do we have a favorable recommendation of the zoning board, or should I just leave it that we've come to this board and made a conceptual presentation, but there was no general...
Yeah, I don't know that the board could make a recommendation such as that for those items that you would be going for.
I think that's a feeling, you have to take away with yourself whatever you think you've got from us, and then you can interpret it however you feel, but for us to give you a formal answer tonight would be inappropriate.
Thank you for your time, have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you.
If anybody comes up with any follow-up questions, please feel free to give me a call.
We'll send them to Brian, or Brian, get them to you.
All right, thank you.
It may, it may be an example...
Don't forget your poster board.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Let's keep things moving here. Next application under new business is MAP 34, Lot 71, it's another conceptual for a proposed mixed-use development, the mill at Hadley Falls, 15 Factory Street, the owner is John Janigan, his own Village Commercial. Brian, could you, do you want to run an overview?
Yes. So tonight we have Chris Booth, who is our applicant on this project here, and she is interested in redeveloping the mill site. There's been a few conceptuals in the past that have come to the town, none of them have ever been, have materialized, however, it's a great site, and even people here tonight have shown interest in the project, but I'm excited to see the, the mill even being thought about, and we've, I think this is a, a good start at a plan, obviously, it's in conceptual form, but, you know, there's some, there's some great concepts that, that they're here presenting. Again, we've provided several review comments, and hopefully, you know, they're not scaring people away by the amount of comments, but we're just trying to help give enough information upfront that helps people understand what they're, what they're looking at, so with that, I'd like the applicant to make their presentation, and we can get into discussing some of the, of the comments or concerns or questions.
I'm the applicant, I'm Chris Booth, and I love your mill, and I'd like to get it going and keep it in flavor with the village itself, not really using it as an extension of what the village can be, have a work-in-live situation, and keep it in an old-fashioned flavor with, you know, antique plates and things like that, keeping the brick mill flavor, bringing it in as a village, you know, the, the buildings would look like a village as far as, these are my conceptualists, I wasn't an engineer or whatever, I do have a design team onboard, in fact, the engineer I'm using is the one that Mr. P's used, so he already has a lot of the information as far as going into there. The architect we're going to be using is Dennis Myers, we have a contractor onboard, and what I'd like to do is do it in phases, what I'd like to do is, we're in negotiations with the Cumberland Farms for the Cumberland Farms piece, when they vacate that in January, so we can extend the entrance, gives you a better sightline into the property, and it would be a one-way in and a one-way out, so it should help with the traffic congestion as far as you're traveling back and forth on the main road there. On your, on your one-way out, it would be a right turn only, because I'm under the assumption that you are doing a, a traffic circle right there, so it would help, again, with the traffic. The mill building that's there, the brick building, would stay there, most of the buildings would stay here, we, the engineer has checked out the block building that's there, and it's going to have to be changed because it's only a single-block building, it's not structurally sound to be able to leave that there the way it is. The hydro plant, I've been in discussions with the state and FERC and everybody else as far as getting that back working again, and if we don't get it working, then we're going to do a charcuterie and deli, deli, and a charcuterie, for those that don't know what it is, is where you actually make salamis and sausages and briskets and things like that, smoking bacon and things.
One of those fancy French words.
A lot of the products, like for the, for the pub restaurant that's going to be there, are going to be coming off my farm, so it's going to be like a farm-to-table and have a general store, so you can actually taste the food that's there, and then you can also buy it on, on the property at the same time, find out how it tastes and that. There's going to be a number of lofts in the project, whether it's seven to nine, there is no definite, these were my thoughts, I've handed it off to the architects, they're, they have more in detail and depth as far as going on. These are my thoughts on paper, so it just kind of gives you an idea of what's going on here. Of course, I want to do the River Walk, so people can come there and make it a destination point, and then you've got the rail trail there. Ryan, at the bike shop in Pinotville, wants to come down and have a store down here. The other thing that we're going to be bringing in is where the barn building is now, which I don't know if all you people know how the buildings are set up there, but if you're coming in, looking at the diagram here where it says bikes, the next building is the barn building, and it's too long right now, so you've got a congestion point right there, so we're going to be taking one of the vents out of there, so that'll free that up, and then when the block building is taken down and rebuilt, it'll give us a wider entrance and a better sightline going down there. And what we're going to have there is an antique co-op on the bottom floor, and then there's going to be two L's that are going to be made out of, on old barn also, so it's going to stay in the same flavor, and we're going to have the artist's lofts in there and an artist's gallery, because I know you have a lot of people here that have a lot of art shows and things like that, and you can use it for antiques, any type of shows if you needed to have something like that done. And you've got a ramp here that goes to the rail, rail trail, because it used to be where they, they offloaded for the manufacturing companies. We're going to keep that and open up between where the old brick building is and where the block building is, so you've got about a 50-foot distance that we're going to take out, and that's going to be the back part where there's going to be an elevator and stairway. But it also, like people that are going to be coming in from the rail trail, say, there's a bike rack, so you can park there, walk through, walk down, go on the River Walk, do some shopping, go to have something to eat or whatever. And the block building itself, I'm just calling it that because that's what's there right now, is going to be residential and retail, so retail would be on the first floor, and then residential on the second floor. I want it to be what an old-fashioned village was, where you work and you live above where you work, and that's what most old villages are like. That's what I liked about your town when I first came in. That's what I liked about your town when I first came into the town. Right now, across from where the block building is, there's a pole barn, and that's gonna be a new build and the same thing, it's gonna be retail with residential above it. Over here, this village is, is supposed to be for seniors, but that's like, that's the last part of it, nothing is definitive right now, we're still working on the plans and what's gonna work out and that kind of thing. And I think that's about it, I mean, we've got the stairway down, I don't know if you're familiar with the river part of it, but there's like some really big rocks that are down there, it's real pretty down in the back, and that's where the stairway comes in, and I'm not sure whether we could have docks for people that are living there, like for canoes or something like that, nothing big or anything like that, but only seasonal, so they'd be in and out, they wouldn't be staying there permanently. I think that covers everything, and I guess I'm open to your questions now, but as far as details and things like that, as my engineer and architect said, they will have a plan within thirty days. I wanted to get on a December meeting, but you've got too many things involved there, and according to Derek, the earliest, I think, is January tenth? January tenth.
Alright, so what she, what she's talking about is asking if she can come back as kind of a continuation of this conceptual hearing, to get some better comments on a more
Detailed plan.
Detailed plan that she's asking for, and that, you know, she not be required to pay an additional fifty-dollar fee or whatever to come back and get some more.
What I'm looking for you today is what things you're actually looking for, so we can put it into the plan, so it is a more detailed plan, and we can address whatever problems that you might foresee.
Anybody have any questions? Barbara?
You're using the same firm that Mr. P's used on his development, did I hear you say that?
The engineering firm.
The engineering firm. Because I'm just wondering, I don't have a specific recollection of what was on that plan at the time, but I'm trying to think whether looking at it might jog people's mind as to what they might like from this applicant or not, I don't want to put you in a certain.
What Mr. P's had is nothing for what we had, it was, looked like a big parking lot, and it was.
That's what my recollection was, and that's why I'm having, because the parking was sort of all.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not using Stephen Keach to redo his plan, I'm just doing it for the engineering.
Because he was doing a different building approach, okay.
Right. I'm looking at it because he has the paper, in fact, when Steve was here, the building that's burnt down beside the block building was still there, and until he came on the property with me, he didn't even know that the river was right there, and he's also a landscape designer, too, so he, he fell in love with the property to do it like that. And Mr. P's, the only building he was keeping was the, the brick mill building, everything else was coming down, and like where the bike.
That's what I remembered, was that it was just the main building and parking, okay.
So, I mean, the main, the main apartment building that he was gonna have is like where the block building is now, and everything else was pretty much parking lot.
Okay.
And that's my thing, is I want it to be aesthetically pleasing, I want flowers, I want trees, I want, I don't want to have a great big parking lot, that's why I have it, you know, broken up the way it is. Make it a destination point, so people.
What are you looking for us tonight for input?
I'm looking to see what you're looking for, for specifics, that I can go back to them and say, well, they need to have this, they need to have that, that kind of thing, that's what I wanted to find out. One, one question I do have is about the parking, with the village district and a waiver, I don't know exactly what it is, how many parking spaces are gonna be required.
Looks like a lot.
And if you're keeping, if you're keeping the ice cream house, surely gonna cut all this down over here, and I think there's a, I think we have an exclusion from the, from the Waterfront Protection Act, so we can cut these trees down, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Shoreline Protection Act.
Shoreline Protection, excuse me, so yeah, there's definitely gonna be, there's definitely gonna be some parking.
Well, as far as the trees that are over there, I looked at them, and they pretty much back up to like where the rail trail is, if we can limb them up instead of eliminating them, and the same where the block building is, there's a lot of junk trees in there, but there's some decent trees that we could save to keep the trees, and have the old trees there, and not just cut everything down, and just have these little saplings in there, so.
Brian, did you have another thing to follow up on?
I was, I was only gonna say, I don't have much to contribute to this, except I like the way you're thinking, and as long as it fits within our, you know, our zoning ordinances, it's your, it's your property, madam, you do whatever you like, but I love what you're considering for this, I think it's fantastic, in my opinion.
Barbara, you were next.
Um, I would just, you started talking about cutting down trees, and I'm just sort of recalling, trying to work with this site before on, on various applications over the years, and I would just say that one thing I, I would like to be able to hear from you, that I think you will, would be appropriate, would be, what is the visual of the site now from the other side of the river, as compared to what would it be after this? Because there was significant comment and concern in previous years raised in regards to cutting trees and exposing a lot of things to sightlines that were not there before.
No, that's my thing, I want the trees.
I, I heard you say that, all I'm saying, for purposes of a presentation, I think that that's something that you might want to consider being able to address. By virtue of perhaps somebody going across the river and being able to show what's there now, as compared to how it would look different if this was to go through once you get further along in your plans, that, that would be my.
And then, as you can see from the plan, I want to add more trees to the parking lot area to.
Are you talking about like a perspective drawing or something that shows?
I'm talking from across the river.
A ways away, what the site would look like?
From the mill pond side or the riverside?
From Mill Street.
Across the river.
Emily, Barbara, where you're calling the steep bank here?
Yeah.
I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
John, you're next.
Yeah.
Well, actually, there's Mill Street, and there's another street back there, and she's gonna put parking here all the streets.
On the second page here of your drawing, that one-way, is that the out?
Yes.
That's the out right now, and that's going to be addressed, because it's on a hill, and where the rail trail meets up with that, there's a jog there, so, Steve has already looked at that, he's the engineer, to address that, and to make just a right-hand turn, so you're not going down the street where the buses are and things like that, so it'll fall into where your traffic circle's gonna be.
I think, I was looking at that earlier today, and I think you may need to get like an easement from the town to cross over, because I think that is rail trail property there, so that's something that you'll just have to keep in mind.
Well, technically, it crosses the rail trail in two places, Brian, if that's what you're saying, unless they have an easement over the rail trail for the other driveway.
But I mean, if it's always, if it's always been an exit, why would you need the easement?
You have to, that's legal.
It would formalize the ability to cross over. I mean, there's no, right now, there is no formal access, because the, the amount of frontage that that corner on, on your property has next to that, that out entrance, just like one little point, and that's it, it doesn't actually have more than, you know, that point on the, on the frontage of the road, that's what I'm saying, it, it needs to go through, for sure needs to go through the rail trail property to gain any driveway access.
Because when you're at the top there, the rail trail is over to the right, but across the street, the rail trail is on the other side of the street.
If you have a driveway there now with a big pole across it.
It's a gate, yeah.
Well, Richard, I think they have to look at the maps, because I'm not sure, because that came up in the discussion in previous discussions about this project, there's something about that back driveway that the town had something to do with, and they even proposed a driveway through the sewer plant at one point, to use the sewer driveway, so there's, there's some, there's some little stuff in there that has to be worked out.
From what I was told is it was, the height is a ten percent grade, that was the thing with that driveway, and the access through the sewer pumping station was for emergency vehicles only.
I remembered on a previous print, that's all.
Yeah, I'm just, because I asked about it.
John still has the floor.
Let's have a follow-up also on that, and if I remember right, because I agree that this is a tremendously, this has a tremendous amount of potential for downtown, and I absolutely would support all of your efforts to make this work and be part of a downtown.
Well, that's nice to know.
So, but I remember that there was something about a right-of-way entrance or this exit coming out of the street, if I, wasn't, it wasn't wide enough, there was something.
Something about that.
That the town needed to, the selectman or somebody wouldn't grant the width necessary, and I'm not sure why, I missed that part of it, but.
It was something.
It's something that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Because there is, the town owns the land, but they wouldn't give up the right-of-way to make it wide enough to have this particular use, or something like that, and I just thought that that's something that you want to.
Well, the reason I, I figured to do that way was to ease up on the congestion with having two-way traffic coming out on the main road right there.
It, it makes sense, but watch out for that.
I have an opinion on that.
Question, if, if just, and if the chair, with permission, direct follow-up to that, Phil, did this have something to do with the petition warrant article that went on about the selectman's ability to
Grant an easement.
Grant an easement that has to go, and the warrant was specifically put on in conjunction with this, an application, well, it wasn't, it came about at the same time, and I think the warrant article passed, so that the selectman's ability to do it is subject to a town meeting vote, I think that was what, that was all about.
I believe so, I don't, I don't remember exactly.
I don't remember the specifics, but it's pretty serious, not whether people want to do it or not, but there may be a requirement for a town meeting vote.
Alright, you asked for specifics, I had, I made a couple notes here based on looking at your print, you're gonna have to show some snow storage areas in this print somewhere, you've got, you've got a pile of snow in here somewhere, you gotta have places to pile the snow, which means you're gonna lose parking spaces or lose development area.
Right, Brian did send me a memo with a lot of the questions, and my team has those questions to address, too.
I would like to see some sort of a percentage number on your retail versus residential occupancy of the project, is it gonna be fifty percent, twenty, twenty, eighty, how's it gonna work? Because that's gonna, you have to consider, you know, coming and going for daily traffic is one thing, but then if you're gonna have residents in there, you have to balance everything out, so there's, there's issues with that, that have to be discussed. And, and the estimated population of the residential portion of that project, if you can come up with something just for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying? And are these gonna be rental, or are you gonna sell these, these units, that's another thing to discuss.
Because it's gonna be phased, I would say it might start off as rentals, and then do it as a condo project, probably.
We would, when we want to approve it as a condo project
Definitely.
Prior to the approval, because otherwise, you, you know, it's, it's got to do with the whole shared maintenance of the properties and a lot of things when you have condo docs involves, so that's something you want to consider, how you want to move in that direction.
Okay.
I personally think that the one-way in and one-way out is not a good thing, I don't know that the new proposed roundabout is actually gonna take in East Union Street as part of the roundabout, I think that new roundabout is gonna be, I haven't seen a plan for it yet, I think it's gonna be free and clear of it a little bit towards the gas station. So you won't actually enter the roundabout from East Union Street?
Right, I mean, I, I was talking with Derek, and because you're still in the planning stages with that, that's why we brought that up, to see whether it could be incorporated, or however it would work out to be a better way, I'm just looking at your traffic in, in the town that I've been here, so.
Well, it, I personally think it's gonna put an undue amount of traffic onto East Union Street, which is all residential. We discussed this at previous meetings as well, so.
Well, you've got your churches and your apartment buildings if you're going right.
Sunday mornings, you can't even drive on East Union Street because of so many cars parked on it, because the church uses East Union Street for parking for.
Can't drive on Mass Road either.
I'm just saying.
Mass Street, wait a minute, sorry.
Sometimes it's only one lane down through East Union Street, so I'm just saying, this is consideration, she wants input, I'm giving it to her. But I, I would, I would ask you, how are you gonna get traffic, is this, is this a tunnel under the ramp here? On the, on the first page, you show the ramp, does the traffic get from this side of this parking lot to this side of the park, is there an underpass here of some kind?
No, it's not that kind of a ramp, there's already a ramp there, it's gonna be lowered, because it's about four feet above the rail trail right now.
But how does the traffic get from this parking lot to this parking, you don't show any connection, you show.
Because this is just, this is just stamped concrete, whatever you want to call it, it is on grade right now, you can already go through.
Oh, so you would drive over that?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't see any arrows to how the traffic flows through there, it's a couple here, and one over here, and one over here, so I wasn't sure how. It almost looked like there was a parking lot on one side and a separate lot on the other side, based on this.
No, it was just tying in the red brick format to go with the river walk and the, and the walking areas.
And I know it won't be popular with the statement, but I think you always have to be careful about how much you try to jam into a project to the, to get every square inch of monetary return to the project, sometimes you're better off to make them a little smaller, they, they become so crammed and so crowded, they, you're, it's almost like you may be trying to overdevelop the site, that's my personal opinion.
Well, that was why I was saying about this village area over here, if that's what it comes down to, that's the tail end of it, as far as, you know, whether it goes or whether it doesn't go.
I'd love to see something happen to the site, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great potential for the site, but I just don't want to see something that's overdeveloped, and it's taking, putting, you know, fifty pounds of building in a forty-pound bag.
Okay.
Do it, it's a good idea.
Anybody else?
Maybe just note where the trash receptacles are for all these commercial buildings especially, and then, of course, eventually, hopefully, for the rental slash condo units in the back.
Right, that's, that's part of the actual design, this was just an easy way to kind of explain how I wanted it set up, it's not the detail that the design team is gonna be doing, and that's what they're gonna have within thirty days. So that's why it's like a continuation of the conceptual, just more detail for you, and they're much better at drawing things than I am, so.
You're doing a pretty good job.
Pretty good, yeah.
Yeah. And great vision, too.
Well, that's good.
Now, the, the entrance in front of the Combeys, do you, is that, there's some funny right-of-way lines over there in front of the Combeys, I remember as part of a previous project, do you, the line you drawn, that would be a proposed line if you were able to negotiate a deal to take over the old Combeys, that's what you're proposing?
Right.
Okay. That's not like that is your actual property line at this time?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's why I've talked with them about buying that when they're vacating it, so we can open that up, so it's a better entrance, because, in fact, I came out of the factory the other day, and somebody just cut right in front of me and went around the sign that's there, and didn't even look to see if anybody was there, if I hadn't been paying attention, I would've got slammed.
Well, I would like to see a two-way driveway there, if possible, and if you can work out something on East Union Street, great, but I don't think it should be half and half, I think it's too much traffic on East Union Street.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, that's good, I had less questions than everybody else has had all night.
Before we conclude the matter, there is a letter from the SAU nineteen that's in your packet, that speaks to this project, I am not going to read it into the record, everyone has a copy of it, and the recording secretary will record it as such, but it basically states that the superintendent of the schools is, wants us to recognize the development's impact on the school system. We thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in a, at a future meeting.
I appreciate the time.
Okay, next on the agenda is our zoning, two thousand thirteen zoning amendment workshop, everybody got some documents from Brian tonight, he passed them out, did everybody get them?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, also, before we, before I forget, I have packets for you all for the next meeting next week.
Yeah, we'll leave them right by that, we'll leave right on that table there, everybody can grab one on the way out.
Pick out, pick up a packet.
We do have a, a short meeting next Thursday night. We do have a, a short meeting next Thursday night. Are we going to have a quorum? Will most people be able to make that meeting? Yeah, next Thursday. Yeah, I thought I got an email from you to that.
Yeah, we have cocktails.
Cocktails at four?
I wish.
Can we all go? So you got three maybe, so we'll have at least five of us, if Phil can make it.
I should be here.
Simone maybe can make it, Barbara and Brian and myself. So we will have a forum at the very least. Okay. Okay, zoning amendments. Brian, I'm gonna let you run with this, so I'm gonna stay right out of it.
So, last week I told you that I would try to come up with as much as I could. I didn't get as far as I wanted to. Um, I sort of went through and came up with just a, a start. And that was just a few, and that's what this page is. So you have, you have this. Now, um, Richard Eeny also came up with a list and his, his is much more.
This is Richard's list?
Written up based on how it might appear on the ballot. Um, mine was still in the form of, you know, what the change might just be.
This is yours, Brian?
Yes.
So we'll start with yours first.
Okay. So, um, you know, and I was just going off of Richard's memo and choosing those topics that he had listed as, as items to think about. Uh, so as a change to five point six, I just recommended adding the words for commercial kennel, kennel use, which would make that, um, specific only to structures that are for the kennel that would, um, need to be a hundred feet from the property line. Um, and that, I think, was getting to what you were implying with your email. Uh, the next one was five twelve four, and we, we made that one quick change to should, should be shall. Um, and then the last one that I got to was gasoline stations. And, uh, what I had proposed was to delete that requirement and then also to, uh, well, based on, um, Richard's email, and then also to change the, uh, use table to allow it in two zones and to allow it in a third zone as a conditional use permit. Um, right now, all three of those are listed, all three of those zones listed as allowed by special exception only. So they would have to go to a zoning board, uh, to, to be able to do it anywhere in town.
The conditional use permit is granted by this board?
Right.
So would not have to go to zoning board at all.
Right. So, um, those were, that's as far as I got with mine now. Um, I might give Richard time.
Did you make these recommendations or something that Richard made these recommendations for the changes? Who came up with the? Was that something you did on your own?
I did, yeah.
Well, why would you be more restrictive in an industrial zone than a commercial zone for a gas station?
Uh, the only reason I had changed it in the industrial zone is because the industrial zone is sometimes not as accessible and not as, you, you don't have a lot of the traffic that you normally get for retail and for gasoline sales that you would in, in an industrial zone.
Well, I would think that if it was an industrial zone, a gas station should be just permitted. I mean, if you're gonna allow commercial buildings, why not just let a gas station in? It's, there's no aesthetics involved. That's one of the big deals with gas stations, is aesthetics. Hours of operation, light wash, tanker noise.
I just, I just know most gas stations like to locate on a retail corner, not, not in an industrial area.
There are cases of, I won't call them gas stations, they're fueling stations that are commercial fueling stations that are, would fall under the same idea as a gas station where diesel trucks would be able to get diesel fuel. And if it was in an industrial area, it would be less traffic, less aggravation, and it would be more conducive to.
Like a truck stop you're talking about?
Not a truck stop, but like, there's a place in, in Ware up on B and B Lane. It's an industrial area. There's a commercial fueling depot up there that Putnam Fuel operates. Where if you have one of their cards for their machine, you can get diesel fuel twenty-four hours a day up there. And the point would be is that it's, it would, it's a good business for them and it's, it's a great use because it doesn't hurt anybody and it doesn't affect anybody, so. I just wanna consider the conditional use specification on that one.
And, and that's up to the board, I guess, to, to determine. I, I have no issues with going either way. I just was in my own mind thinking of possible reasons to make one of them a conditional use permit.
Okay. It's up to the board to decide. And you changed the sale or rental of motor vehicles in the.
Yeah, I, I kinda felt like there should be at least one zone in town that also had. And so since I was looking at that table already, I, I jumped in and threw that one in there as well.
Okay, my real. Ryan, please, John.
Can I just ask, on, on the area from St. Anselms on one fourteen, St. Anselms Drive, Shirley Hill to the Bedford Line, is that on both sides of the road where Benchmark is and across the street where that proposed industrial park is going or would like to be someday? Is that zoned industrial?
Changed that, Phil, didn't we, two years ago?
Is that zoned?
Hebert, the property next to Hebert's was commercial, as I thought, and I think we changed that to industrial by the town vote.
And the, and the, and the, the other property in front of Hebert's, the flat down by one fourteen and all of that under the power line and that new industrial park, is that zoned industrial?
The.
You did one side of the road by vote, as I remember.
What do you mean the new industrial park?
The Hebert's property is zoned industrial.
I, we know what you're talking about, John. It was, it was in a concept, there was some talk about some development on a very conceptual basis.
Jim, Jim McClellan.
Right, but there's, that was some time ago and there's nothing before us.
He, I think he's just asking what the zoning.
What is the zoning over there?
That's C I F Z. The, the Hebert's is on industrial and the, the rest of that McClellan.
Is ag, isn't it?
Thing is C I F Z.
All, all the way down to the Bedford Line.
No, it got changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a town vote.
I wasn't sure which party he was talking about. That's what.
What's Benchmark?
That's the other side.
Benchmark is commercial. It's on the other side.
Benchmark is commercial, and the other side of the road from Shirley Hill to the Bedford Line is, is.
C I F Z.
C I F Z, okay.
Except for Hebert's, which is industrial.
So that's commercial, industrial.
Flex.
Flex, which would, which gasoline sale would not be permitted, is that?
Well, currently. Gasoline sales is not, is not permitted only, except for by a special exception to the zoning board.
Yeah, I'd like that, I mean, I, I would suggest that's permitted.
So, yeah, that's where I recommended it be changed to permitted.
See how he crossed out the S E and put a P next to it?
I'm sorry, it looked like it was, I'm sorry.
Looks like September from here.
I'm sorry, it looks, I, I thought that was through the whole thing.
Sorry.
Permitted, okay, I'm sorry.
Take out the S E and leave the P.
Got it.
That's the beauty of, that's the beauty of the track changes.
Okay, it looked like it was.
It doesn't, doesn't always read the right way.
Okay, that's fine.
Tim, I like what you said too about changing the conditional use to a P on the retail sale of gasoline.
I think it should be allowed in the industrial zone. You're not gonna hurt anybody.
Yes.
Right, I would say that too.
Anybody disagree with that statement? You don't like it or you do?
I don't disagree with that.
Um, let's talk about your sale and rental of motor vehicles. Um, I know that's kind of a big, a big area.
The C I F Z zone?
Yeah. No, the, it's kind of a, a broad paintbrush. Rental, motor vehicles, boats, trailers, R Vs. But a lot of times motor vehicle repairs have motor vehicle sales as an accessory to their building, their business rather. So, um, I guess they could get a special exception permit in the commercial zone. You're gonna permit it in the, in the flex, but you're gonna make it a special exception again in the industrial. So it kinda.
Well, again, I mean, if you wanna go as permitted in both I and C I F Z and then.
Yeah.
You know, C, C U P and the other one.
In industrial areas.
I honestly don't think those really need to go to the zoning board. I don't know why zoning board is.
I mean, an RV dealer would wanna be in an industrial park. They wouldn't wanna be in, on Mass Street. Funeral Hall parking lot. So, so we propose to make the, um, G one sale or rental of motor vehicles in the industrial zone a permitted use?
Yeah.
Then take out the special exception? Anybody see any flaws with that?
None.
Or downside?
No.
What about in the commercial zone? You wanna leave it as a special exception?
Alone because that's a much tighter zone. You have a lot of other competing businesses that it could have a negative impact on them. So maybe we should leave that as a special exception.
Okay.
But the board can discuss it if they choose to.
I don't know, you're, you're one of those guys. What do you think, John?
You're one of those guys? Nice.
Permitted.
He's one of those guys.
One of those guys.
One of those guys, huh?
What are those guys?
Motor vehicle guy. He's a commercial guy in the, a lot of track changes guy.
He's, he's in the repair business though, right? Are you in the sale?
He's a permitted, he's all Ps.
Are you in the, are you in the sale of rent, sale or rental of motor vehicles?
No, not, not now.
Shh, John.
Is there any reason we shouldn't permit it?
No.
I think it might be because of the scope of the, of the lot then, Richard. You know, you might, somebody goes in there and they turn John's Route one fourteen auto into John's gas station parking lot, and you got fifty cars piled up.
There you go.
I'm just picking on you, John, cause you started it.
I can handle it.
You're a big boy.
Oh, yeah. I've had worse.
Well, we can bring it up at another meeting if you want, or we can discuss it now. It's up to the, up to the members to discuss, decide it.
Making some good progress.
Honestly, I mean, I think we could go through this entire ta, the entire zoning ordinance use table because I think there's several of these things that could be changed.
All right, well, let's move on, cause we're getting late. Um, so we, are we okay with this right now for, for tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're gonna have another, next Thursday, we have another bite at the apple.
The only concern I have is this.
Oh, we're not even discussing that yet.
I, I have a different opinion of that on, on this sheet.
Okay.
This is, that was Brian's interpretation.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. Which one are you gonna, which one are we gonna, so we'll know in advance?
When you're ready, we'll talk about.
Start on yours then, right now.
Okay.
Would you like to, um, lead the charge with yours since you wrote them?
Yes, thank you.
Is it all right with you, Brian?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and, and when we get to points where Brian and I had a.
Difference of opinion.
Not necessarily meeting of the minds, not, not, not even a difference of opinion, but, uh, our intents were misunderstood between us. Um, but I tried to put mine into the, the verbiage that you see on the town warrants for lack of better, um, better terms. Um, regarding six point four point two, and if you have your zoning stuff out, that's on page thirty-seven. I would like to see that changed to state that sign content could change no more frequently than once every fifteen seconds, and also to eliminate a, the requirement for conditional use permits for signs which change content electronically. This, what this doesn't do is it doesn't, uh, change the prohibition on animation, uh, flashing, uh, tracing, traveling sequential type lights. Cause that's addressed in six point four point three. This just says that, uh, basically this, the LED thing, that if you have one of them signs, you can't, you're not limited to putting the stuff up for all day, but give us about fifteen seconds to read it and then you can put something else up. I think that's what it says.
So the fifteen seconds is the change?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, we're gonna discuss these individually? You're gonna talk, go through them tonight and then talk about them on Thursday? Or how do we wanna do this?
I think we should discuss them.
Okay, let's discuss them. Let's have some discussion on the first item. We're gonna call that number one. Mark?
Yeah, I think this is a good improvement and fifteen seconds is a long time. It's not gonna be a big distraction. If you drive, if you're driving past it at any speed, you're not gonna see multiple messages flashing in front of you distracting you as a driver. I don't, I don't think we should have, uh, any restriction there at all, but fifteen seconds seems like a reasonable compromise.
Do you guys worry about, I know you're concerned that businesses have the right to compete and make money, don't get me wrong. But do we wanna turn Gostown into a big blinking Christmas tree?
Well, I don't think we're turning it into that. If people wanna invest in signs, cause they think it's gonna improve their business and attract new customers, more power to them.
And we wanna, we wanna keep the. Yeah, we wanna keep the prohibition on the, the blinking thing, uh, cause that's addressed in six point four point three. And I don't think we should change that at all, because when, when your signs become distracting, uh, it doesn't help your town and it doesn't, uh, it, it probably hurts, uh, traffic safety.
I think the traffic safety argument is a red herring. I don't buy that. You drive down, there's overload, you drive down Mass Road in Pinnardville, and you can't believe the number of signs and things going on, so.
I understand your point that it, if it changes every fifteen seconds, it wouldn't be a distraction. But if you have, let's say we have five electronic signs in a hundred-foot section of properties and each one of them is changing at a different pace, now you're back and forth blinking. I mean, is, are we going in that direction in Gostown from our little village area? We're gonna go to the more high-tech, high-profile blinking light signs? I'm, I'm thinking of aesthetics myself.
I don't, I don't think that can happen in the village commercial.
I know it can't happen in the village, but I mean, even Pinnardville is still a neighborhood and, and, you know, a lot of people live down there. They, uh, they make their homes in Pinnardville and, you know, they, you live in Pinnardville, John. You know, you go down the road, go down to Shaw's or whatever, you, your own business, you know?
I wish I had one.
A blinking sign?
I wish I had a blinking sign.
Well, you do have one. Does that mean you, you have, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you gotta shut that off. They already voted for you.
I just, I just wanna consider the aesthetics of it, guys. You know, I'm not against businesses making money. I think we should keep up with technology, but I just, you know, we, we ans, we, the seven of us sit here and make a decision that affects all the rest of the residents in the town and what they think about stuff like this. And I know they'll vote on it. But I think we need to consider the big picture.
I, I don't feel smart enough to be the arbiter of what is aesthetically pleasing or not. I don't think anybody in this room is. And there's some, in my opinion, some ugly houses, some ugly landscaping, some ugly potholes in the street and ugly trees that are half-dead and some bad paint jobs and old roofs that are peeling on homes. And I think they're aesthetically offensive, but I'm not gonna go use the power of government to those people, they have to paint their houses or plant a new tree or fix the peeling roof tile. So I, I'd rather do less than try to put more restrictions on people or try to, uh, be the all-knowing determiner of what's aesthetically pleasing. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Come back to Phil.
Yeah, the, the only concern I have with it is I think there's two issues here. And the way this is worded, I don't think, uh, differentiates between them because when you talk about a sign or an electronic message center, okay? A sign that's in front of a business to advertise a commercial business is one thing versus a message center. If you have a sign that changes its content and it's advertising the business versus a message center that's changing messages that are not pertinent to the business, I think are two different issues. And this does not seem to differentiate one or the other. And I don't know if there was any intention or any thought put into that. I have a concern with changing advertising. I feel that changing advertising is different than a message center because you're dealing with two different issues.
Can you give me a, for instance?
For instance, the message center in front of the police station is a message center. The board that's previously used at, uh, what's now Andres'. was a message center that gave messages. If you give out messages that are pertinent to the community, that's one thing. But if you have a changing sign that changes the advertising for a business, that's a different animal.
So could any private corporation, could any private corporation have a sign changing as long as it's messages and not promoting its business?
Well, I'll give you an example. In front of Bartlett School, there's a little sign, little message center that's up there for the community. They go out there, they change those messages. If they came and they wanted to change that manually changing sign to an electronic message center, but they're gonna keep the same type of content, which are messages for the community, that is different than a business putting in a sign that's gonna change, such as real estate signage over by the Old Oja Real Estate in Manchester, for example. They advertise properties. They move, they do all kinds of things. So if you had a message board that went up there in front of a real estate office that advertised a property, and it changes every fifteen minutes with a different type of property, that's advertising the best. It changes, but it's not differentiating between a message center and advertising.
Just the one near Queen City Ave?
That one has movement and...
Well, but I understand, I, in the comparison, it does have movement, but the point that I was trying to make, that it does change its message.
Right.
Which is a different way, or, you know, a different method of changing, but it changes the message periodically.
Okay.
That is...
Richard, do you, do you have any agreements to what Phil is getting to in terms of messages versus advertising? Do you, would you consider amending that, or do you...
I think if a business wants to tell you what they have on sale that day, and they may not be able to fit it in all on one screen, if I want to say chicken one ninety-nine per pound, put it up there, and then fifteen seconds later, I can say grapes, one forty-nine per pound.
So you don't want...
And if they want to go with the next screen to say it's 2:05 PM and the temperature is sixty-three degrees, don't we wish? I think that's okay. And that would be a message built in in addition to advertising. So I'm more concerned about the sign and the frequency with which messages can change.
Okay.
And those messages may be advertising messages, or they may be community messages, or they just may be informational messages.
So you're not going to amend that one?
Okay.
Okay.
Subject to making it all voter legalese.
Legalese, right.
That's what I'd like to stick to.
Well, we'll discuss them all, and then if the board chooses, we can vote on these tonight or at a subsequent date, because we still have to vote on them as a board on whether we agree with these one through eleven that you're proposing or not. Any more discussion on number one? Number two, Richard, please.
Number two, we discussed at the last meeting, is I just want to eliminate the special exception requirement. And you have to visit a table. I don't know offhand what page that table is, but it's just a table that says for Section 5.5.2, there's an SE in there. And I guess, to use the table, I guess I would want to put a P. Is that right, Brian? In table terms?
So the Agriculture and Horticultural Operations?
So that would be table, well, Section 3.12, Table A10. And it's got under Residential 1 and Residential 2. Are you asking for both of those, or...
3.12, this line eleven, or ten and eleven?
Line ten, just line ten.
Line ten, yes. P and B.
Poultry only.
Change SE to P in both instances.
What page do you want?
Page twenty.
Yeah, page twenty.
So right now, in the R1 and R2 zones, it's raising and keeping of poultry is allowed by special exception, and he would like to change that to being allowed by right, permitted.
And it doesn't necessarily change, let me go back to 5.5.2, because 5.5.2 would still state it shall clearly be incidental and subordinate to the use of the lot for principal residential use. So I guess it's really my verbiage here. I'm not amending 5.5.2, I'm actually amending the table on page twenty.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Do you differentiate between livestock and poultry in an R1 and an R2? They're two different things in terms of a lot of...
Sure, livestock could be a rabbit and...
Livestock could also be a cow.
Sure.
But it's not a chicken.
But if you live in an R1 and your lot is fifty feet wide, you're saying that you would permit someone to have a cow on a lot if it's fifty feet wide?
No, we're only talking poultry. We're only talking poultry on this table.
5.5.2.
There are two separate categories on the table.
There's ten and eleven. So the one he's asking for is poultry. Is that right? Or you want livestock and poultry?
Are you on J, Agriculture?
We're on line ten.
Because there are no...
Line ten is Raising and Keeping of Poultry.
But your verbiage says poultry and livestock.
I think it's, because the way you had, the way you, the way I perceived that I had to write a warrant article was that you state, shall the town adopt, as your first component, and then you say the zoning section, and then you say the title of that zoning section, which is Raising Livestock and Poultry. Now, 5.5.2 in this table only refers to poultry. So it's...
So what you mean is it's the livestock and poultry section, but then special exception for those pursuing poultry.
Sure, slash the livestock from there.
Not livestock and poultry, okay.
It's all stuff.
So it's just poultry only, it never existed.
Okay, so, that's better.
And actually, the section name wouldn't be livestock, Raising Livestock and Poultry. It would be Table of Accessory Uses.
Sure, I'm an amateur, you're the professional.
Well, I mean, I would think that you're talking about redraft. If you're voting on these tonight, you're talking about redrafting the language so that we've got it exactly to come back here. I mean, subject to, everything would be subject to final wording.
Right.
It's sort of in the spirit of the ordinance discussion.
Right. Right.
So you'd like to permit raising of poultry in the R1 and R2 as a permitted use?
Correct.
To have the special exception removed?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on number two?
The only thing I'll say about that is I know in the R2 zone especially, there are some very small lots. And so we may want to come up with, in the Section 5.5.2, the livestock and poultry section, like an acreage chickens per acre allowance or something like that.
Maybe chickens could be no taller than...
If you have a lot that is larger than ten thousand or twelve thousand acres or something, then you're allowed that.
R2 is not twelve thousand acres. We're talking R2, right?
I'm sorry, square feet.
Square feet.
Square feet.
He meant square feet. We understood square feet.
And did we not limit them to six chickens in a previous vote?
No, we did not.
We never did that?
No.
Okay.
I'm never ever... People ask me that all the time.
Well, because that's how it came out at the CBA.
I know. And it just like spreads like wildfire. It's all over town that six chickens are allowed.
Okay, we're all done with chickens then, right, for now?
Yes, sir.
Because it's twenty after nine, let's move. Number three, Richard.
Number three, Brian took care of, I like what he addressed on the sheet that he passed out.
Okay, so you're good with that one?
Yes, if the dogs live there, well, it has to be more than a hundred feet. But if the owner lives there, it doesn't have to be.
Got it. Number four?
Number four. Brian and I, we went different ways with this. He wrote, shall be manufactured or assembled on the premises, and...
You wanted to delete that whole section.
I just, because that section was, to me, with the word should, was a recommendation. So I don't believe that you recommend things as part of an ordinance, so I thought we should remove 5.1, 2.4.
The entire section?
Yes.
Just, I didn't interpret, I thought you were just talking about the wording and being permissive versus required. So, I mean, I get where the two of you came up with a different result from that discussion.
Yeah, I like what you've done here, Richard, on this one. As opposed to requiring the shall.
So what you're saying, Richard, is that if you eliminate 5.12.4, anybody who has a home business can import stuff and sell it on the premises? Is that what it comes down to?
Yes, they would still be subject to, it doesn't necessarily have to be imported, but it still would be subject to the other, the existing six requirements, and there's actually more than six, but it would still be subject to all of the requirements in 5.1.2 for home occupation.
Okay. Any discussion on that, number four? Number five?
We discussed gas stations already. I liked Brian's idea better when he showed me, so you can forget what I said. I like what Brian said and the changes we made to that table even better.
So number five, we can just remove that from your sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we'll be getting rid of 5.17.2 or something to that effect since we'd just be permitting it.
Per Brian's memo instead.
Per Brian's memo.
Okay, number six. Amendment number six yard sale.
Yes, it's 5.18. I considered the, this is a really long, two sentences. I considered that the second sentence is, spends a bunch of time explaining the first sentence, and then apparently restricts renters from having yard sales or people who are leasing from having yard sales. And the letter of the law, it would restrict multifamily yard sales because it specifies homeowners' personal property. To me, the first sentence takes care of the need in the town not to have yard sale as a permanent business. So I'd want to strike the second sentence, but maintain the first.
So you're wanting to strike, under no circumstances shall yard sales become blah, blah, blah?
Because if you can only have a yard sale for three consecutive days and no more than four in any one-year period, then by default, you're not a home occupation, home-based business flea market.
So you're back to, if you eliminate the whole last section after under no, you are permitting people to import stuff and stick it on their lawn and run yard sales every weekend if they want?
No. Because you can only do it four times a year and up to three consecutive days.
Now, is that a permitted requirement through the town of Gostown? Do you have to get a permit for yard sale in Gostown?
No, no. We don't want that. I don't want that.
Don't know?
I don't either.
Okay, does anybody have any...
You want that, Mark?
Issue with...
I'd be busy all day long with yard sale permits. I do not want that.
Anybody want to discuss number six, yard sales?
I'll just say that I think perhaps this, that to address the issue that people are trying to get at, perhaps, and I'm not gonna spend any time on it, but sentence two perhaps is what should be addressed as far as modifying it rather than deleting it. I don't know, none of us know the practical impact of any changes of zoning ordinances. We can only speculate and see. But as this is an unpermitted activity, in that you don't have to come for permits, you don't, in my opinion, want to create a situation where you're begging to require permits by allowing people to pretty much sell anything they want on their property. And I understand that there's a perception that three days a year, four times a year is enough to control that. But if you want to keep it a non-permitted event, which I think you should, I think you then open it up for all sorts of issues and people keeping tabs on what in fact is going on. Because if you start to allow people to import things to resell on the property, I think that the individuals' compliance with the four times a year starts to go out the window. The reality is if you're selling your own stuff, or the tenant's junk, or somebody else's stuff, not junk, priceless stuff, you probably don't do it more than a couple of times a year. Because putting together a true yard sale is an effort. You don't do it more than a couple of times a year. But if you're going to allow people to sell whatever they want, regardless of its origin, then it becomes, quite honestly, a commercial operation. That's why there's a distinction. And once it becomes a commercial operation, where the source of the sales are something other than the homeowner's personal property, and there's no definition under sentence one restricting it to that, once it becomes a commercial operation, you are in effect saying, because you don't have a storefront with a sign on it, you don't have to get a permit. But if you do have a storefront with a sign on it, you do have to get a permit. So I understand that there are people all into, they might call it libertarian. I sort of call it something else, but wanting people to be able to not have government interfere with what they want to do. But the reality is, part of what you do is try to level the playing field. And when you start allowing people to do things without having to come in and sign what the rules are, and we saw an instance tonight where somebody was handed a piece of paper that said clearly what was required, and then said, but we didn't think it applied, without ever getting a change to the piece of paper. You know, you're talking about changing yard sales to the ability to be essentially a commercial operation. I would suggest that perhaps a modification of sentence two, rather than a deletion of it, would be more appropriate. But that's my comment.
So if a modification were to be proposed, would we just modify it to, say, the residence? Personal property or something like that?
Well, I think one of the issues was that if you had it, if...
Because I think he was getting to whether it's rental or tenant or homeowner.
Right.
It would be hard to police, because once someone goes to the swap shop and picks up an old bicycle and hauls it home, now it's their personal property.
Yeah.
Who's gonna differentiate?
But I think the issue was, is it somebody who's there? I think I heard a distinction between a property owner as compared to a resident. And if I'm a resident and I want to have a yard sale in the front yard, if I'm a renter, I'm not the homeowner, but I'm a renter, and if I want to have a yard sale, I should be able to. I thought that was, you know, something that made some sense and wasn't clear. Again, this is an unpermitted, unpermitted activity, which is why the practical reality is of whether somebody's personal items are the homeowner's or the tenant, has never really come up.
In most cases, it never will unless there's a complaint about someone that's abusing the rule.
How often do you get complaints about yard sales?
Never.
So if we don't change the ordinance, Richard, we're not changing anything.
And if we strike the second sentence, we're not changing anything either, right?
Unless the reason you don't get complaints is because everybody complies with it.
What we're doing then is we're promoting the guy that wants to have fourteen snow blowers on his lawn for sale, and he, you know, he does it nine times a year because nobody's actually counting the four.
Oh, his neighbors are counting.
But they don't have any right to count.
But they don't, they don't want to complain because they want to be good neighbors. I don't think, I don't think it needs to be changed. I think it should be left alone, myself. Anybody else on this subject?
Just want to add one thing. Part of the other issue that, the reason why this is there, because as was mentioned earlier, you start getting displays out on the front yard, items for sale, and they could be... items for sale, and they could be items that are being sold on a retail basis.
Yeah, back to home occupation.
That kind of, that, that tends to separate them out. That's how that evolved.
But that would violate another ordinance somewhere, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Because then anybody could put anything out for retail with prices on it. And it could be items that I could just, as I sell them, I call up, I order more, put them out there.
Let's move on to number seven, please, Richard. Could you do that one for us?
Yes.
I numbered mine.
Oh, yes.
Anybody else number them?
Seven and, seven and eight are very similar, because this is, this is, these are the ones that in the, in the ordinance they talk about shall be illuminated by a single shielded white light. And I don't want to limit people to single, and I don't want to limit people to white. Because sometimes you need to put a different color on a sign to make the lettering show. Because not everybody has white lettering or black lettering. And if you have, like, gold lettering, what color do you want to use? Do you want to use red so the gold shows up, or something like that? And why restrict them to single if we're telling them it has to be shielded?
If you use a different color, though, it would actually show up as a different color, unless you were using white. The white light.
So you would get the effect you desire.
The white light will show colors as they are. Any other color of light will distort the color to some other color.
Okay, and I'm cool with that.
Well, the only thing is, is you're talking about color. You're not talking about reflection, you're not talking about.
Nuisance?
You're talking, you're talking about color on a flat sign. What if you have a three-dimensional sign and it's gold leaf? You have white light, the effect is not a good effect.
So people wouldn't be able to read your sign?
Because it, we had one that was put up on Mass Road, and when the lights came on at nighttime, you couldn't read the sign. If you had a different color sign in that application, for that particular application, you wouldn't be able to see it.
Or different color light.
Right.
So the proposal is to not restrict it to white light and to allow more than one light, which is to change to the existing ordinance, okay? Anybody want to discuss that?
Sounds reasonable to me.
No limit on the number of lights, Richard? Fifteen lights shining on it, if that's what the guy wants to pay for?
They're, they're shielded, so go for it. Because we're not removing the requirement that it be shielded.
Okay, number eight?
That was included, but seven and eight were the same thing, just a different, different zone.
Okay.
Number nine?
Please.
Okay, number nine is the portable A-frames. Right now, our current restriction is three feet. And I don't think it's enough, so about nine feet. Last week Barbara questioned my ten feet, so I, I modified it down to nine.
If I can, since you, I'd sort of ask, where you came up, this is nine feet per side, so it's really a change from three to eighteen, right, based on the way this is?
It would change from six.
So six.
Six, so six to, to eighteen.
Right.
But I, I guess I just want to know, I, I mean, the same question of ten. How'd you come up with ten? How'd you come up with nine?
Three by three, something simple like that.
All right, no, I just wondered, because I know there was some calling about, to businesses by somebody about various lights, and I was wondering whether, I don't know, who's an A-frame sign, whether you had called somebody, or these are just, these changes are literally, are, are you're going through and deciding what you think is appropriate for that zone.
I, I just looked around town at the A-frames that I either see or typically see, and I see them sometimes in the vicinity of Apothica. The.
So did you get out and measure them, or what did you do?
Just my estimate of their, of their size. And then there's another one that's typically in use at Glen Lake Animal Hospital. Those are the, those are the ones you see most frequently, but.
I think those ones are probably more like six.
Yeah, the two by three, two by three.
Okay, and just if, with the chair's permission, just so, the same thing for what we were just talking about with the color of light bulbs or the number of light, light bulbs. Did you talk to any people who have these signs or manufacture these signs as to what that change would, would do? Okay, I'm seeing no. And then my same question in regards to, there was another one where you had this. I, I really didn't want to talk about signs, so I'm only asking this one specific question. When you talk about the fifteen seconds, did you talk to any sign manufacturers or look at the data on signs, or?
I talked to some users of signs.
To some owners of signs? Okay, who have already, who have already purchased them?
Either have them or were considering having them.
Okay, and, and they wanted fifteen seconds?
Well, they wanted more frequently, and I asked what would be a good compromise level.
Because I don't know, what did they, what was the number they wanted?
The more frequent, no restriction. But the more frequent it is, the more it gets toward blinking, at least that was my response, so. And I know we have a requirement that says you can't have a blinking sign. So I was looking for a compromise number.
Okay, and then just, so, because I'm on this, this roll, so we can just, in regards to the, the next change to ten, that your proposed ten and eleven and twelve, those are based on your read of them, like the two hundred to three hundred and the two years on the last one, those, those were.
Let's, let's.
Okay, well, I'll wait, I just didn't want to.
So, the only thing, Richard, I'd like to discuss with you on this one is if you want to go to nine square feet, I think we need to have a caveat that the signs are not going to interfere with the pedestrian use of the sidewalk. Because now you've got a five-foot sidewalk, and now you're going to put a three-foot wide sign on it, you're going to interfere with the pedestrians that use that sidewalk, and I have, I have a problem with that.
They're not allowed on the sidewalk.
I also want to just bring up, this is larger than the sign that's allowed in the RSBO one and two districts. I mean, it's only eight square feet, which I think is a little small myself, but to keep that in mind, if you're going to go, if you're going to keep the eight square foot in the RSBO one and two districts and allow for a nine-square-foot sandwich board sign, I mean, you want to think about.
I would make it consistent to make this one eight also.
Except you're doubling it to sixteen then. Now you've got, they can have sixteen square feet of signs for the building. Because they can have their eight-square-foot sign on the building and now their eight-foot square foot next to the sidewalk, so they're doubling it. Mark, you had your hand up.
I forgot what I was going to say now.
Okay, well, if you think of it, put your hand up again, I'll get back to you. Okay, so anybody else want to discuss the A-frame signs? Okay, number ten, Richard.
Ten, it, just an observation in my limited experience here is that we seem to, we seem to waive parking requirements fairly regularly. And in the, the history of the board, the parking requirements seem to be waived fairly regularly. So, I thought, let's have a less restrictive parking requirement, then we won't have to waive it.
I'd rather waive it.
And you came up with three hundred square feet, how?
Added a hundred to the current one. It was just a shot in the dark. But it seems that we're waiving a bunch, so let's change it.
Might reduce our workload, right? We'd have fewer waiver requests, possibly.
Well, we all agree that the, the downtown area is our, basically our area. The village areas where we have a lot of waivers, because, you know, it's communal parking, basically, in the village. But when someone wants to build a building anywhere, they have to do their best to meet the requirements. And if we're going to reduce the requirements, we're just going to hurt ourselves and everybody in the long run. So I, I would be inclined to keep the regulations, and then if we, if someone proves because of the size of the lot and the way it works out that they've maximized their spaces, that gives us the opportunity to waive the parking then and help them, help them get opened. Phil?
But I think some of those waivers that we do, we also require that they have an agreement, that they have
Offsite.
Other places to park.
As in the case of the church.
That we just did, the Baptist church.
As in the case of the Christadelphians.
This is just for retail trade, right?
So, actually, most of the waivers we've had have been for non-retail. So I guess my question is, why retail and why not the other zones?
Did, was there, wasn't there a waiver for the hardware store?
Yes, there was.
Not in front of this board that you've been on, so I guess my question is, we're talking about the workload and what you've seen in your experience.
Well, I, also, my experience includes looking through past year's minutes.
Okay, and so why did you decide not to do commercial and, look at the commercial and industrial ones also? Or the CI?
I understand retail better. That's the only reason I chose it.
I know that there are some general rules of thumb for parking. And I mean, I can get my hands on some, some of those standards and see if they pan out to what we have in our ordinance. And try to.
Sure.
You know, look at ours and say, you know, see if we need to change more of them, or, or keep what we've got, or whatever, but.
I might be more amenable, Richard, to this if you could show me that we are excessive compared to other towns. If we are in line with other towns, then I think we're good.
I like more what Brian said, industry-wide standards. We could compare ourselves to other, other towns, but perhaps the other towns are either too restrictive or the other, other towns.
I've, I've got a book upstairs that I know has some recommended parking standards.
For what, the United States of America, or for, for small-town USA Gostown?
It's, I mean, it's a general.
But that's what we're, but we're doing is that we're applying two hundred square feet. And the, the data that that was based upon, I doubt exists.
Well, let me, can I just follow up with a question on this, and I don't want to do this too long, because I really did be here this late. The, the Dunkin' Donuts proposal that we saw the conceptual on, as I look at the other one, it's going to need a variance because it's not, it's zoned. It's residential, right? Or it's RSBOD, it's RSBOD. All right, so would you, how would, what would we apply for parking requirements for that?
For, for a restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would have to, again, look at, you know, the, the book that I've got upstairs, or, you know, different standards that may be out there that I could compare to. But for right now, the standard is one per seventy-five square feet.
Square feet, yeah.
And five additional spaces for stacking.
Any more discussion on the parking requirements?
Or for, for a drive-through, I'm sorry. Five additional spaces when you have a drive-through.
All right, number eleven, Brian, or, excuse me, Richard.
Number eleven, there's a, there's a hundred-dollar fee required to do annual health and safety inspections. And if the town wants to do these things, which they don't do for other, which they don't do for apartment buildings, condominiums, neighborhoods, or individual homes, if, if the town wants to do them, I would prefer that they eliminate the hundred-dollar fee, because it's just, it's just a tax on a neighborhood that I don't think is appropriate. Ideally, we don't require the annual health and safety inspections. But if you're going to have it, do it at no cost, since you don't do it to anybody else.
Question?
Barbara?
I think we start, we did start to talk about this a little bit. Did you find out whether we require it, or whether we do it, and why we do it?
It's, it's in, it's in our zoning regulation.
I, I think I was supposed to get with Mark and try to get into the statutes and stuff like that, and I never got that far. So.
Well, I just wondered whether Richard had, since he had brought it up. I mean, sometimes people come into town hall and talk to people.
All right.
And then, number twelve, forgot the line spacing there. I'd prefer, instead of having to, after your, after your house burns down or is destroyed by some sort of tragic loss, I'd prefer to give people two years to rebuild, or to start rebuilding than just one year. Because sometimes that stuff takes a while, as we hear month after month here. We currently require one year.
Any discussion on that one?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Well, if we have no discussion on them, would you like to take a straw poll on these? Or would you like to vote on these tonight and move this process forward? Do you want to discuss them further? Because if, do we have a subsequent zoning workshop beyond next Thursday?
The next one that would be after that will be our noticed public hearing, so we'll need to kind of shore up at the next meeting, what, which ones will be going on.
I would have to say that there's three gentlemen who are not going to be at the next meeting.
Possibly.
And I'm not going to have a vote without them here, based on his vote.
I, I, I like the term you used, straw poll, and I recognize what Barbara said earlier about this would be subject to what the final wording was. But if, if there's things that I've written down here where you all just don't like it to start with, and it would be one-six, no matter what the wording was, and I think the straw poll thing could help us shape our future zoning workshops, and that might be the best way to move on.
All right, well, Brian, do you have a sheet in front of you that you could make notes of the straw poles as we go through them, so you can keep a record?
Yeah.
Okay, for the first one, we'll do a simple, a simple show of hands is all we're going to do. And I'll ask for anyone who's in favor of it to show their hand. So the first one that wants to change the.
Sign content.
Sign content changes to every fifteen seconds. Everyone's in favor of that, put their hand up. Three. So it's three to.
No, you need to go both.
Well, all those, all those who are opposed, put their hand up. Now, since it's a straw poll, I assume Simone can vote in a straw poll or not. It's just, this is not, this is a non-binding vote, this is just.
Just to feel which way we want to go, right?
Of the committee. So Phil, did you do something over there, or you?
He's sleeping.
Abstaining.
Did I do something over there?
I didn't see you raise your hand. Because we're all done discussing it.
Well, I, I specifically didn't do it one way or the other, because I, I, to me, I have a difference between sign content and message.
That's fine, we've heard, we're not going to, we're not discussing it.
No, but you asked, and that's why I didn't do it one way or the other.
You're going to abstain then, is that right?
Are you asking for a straw poll, or are you calling a vote?
Okay, so we got four, four and, and then nobody, over there, don't want to vote.
So, four.
Four, three, one.
Against, is that right?
Four against, three, four, one, no vote.
You vote against?
Uh, no, I'd be for that.
You are, I'm paralyzed.
Well, if, if I'm included, or, you know, you tell me.
Then it's.
I say yes.
All right, I'm going to start over. Those who are in favor of changing this to read every fifteen seconds, put your hand up. We'll start from scratch. That's one, two, three, four. Brian, did you vote yes, or, okay?
I voted yes, that Simone should be included, that's what I was talking about.
So there's four yes.
We're not really voting, we're just polling.
Those opposed to the fifteen-second time change. Three. And those who are abstaining are not voting.
One.
One. So it passes. The next one, shall the top.
It passes, it polls with more four than against. Pass, it polls with more four than against, but Richard's got it.
Number of people.
It's just worth pursuing.
Permitting poultry in R-one and R-two, those are in favor of it, raise your hand. Four. Those are opposed to it. Three. Those who don't want to vote.
I had a question, but I didn't get an answer. Does poultry include roosters?
Yes.
Yes.
Of course.
And turkeys.
Well, then I would just ask that you, you seriously consider what you.
That's, we're just doing a straw.
Phil, we're doing a straw poll, we're not discussing. If you wanted to talk about turkey, you should have talked about.
No, no, you don't.
So who's opposed to this besides?
You already took that sweep.
Four, three, one.
Four, three, one.
Four, three, one. So that one. Passes.
Polls positively.
Polls, straw poll positive.
Chickens are actually pretty dirty if you don't have the right.
Commercial kennels, the changes for commercial kennels as a po, proposed by Brian in his document. Those in favor of the commercial kennel changes? Unanimous. Um, home occupation. Deleting, no, by removing the recommendation to goods be sold manufactured or assembled on premises. In other words, you can bring stuff in and sell it. All those in favor of that change, raise your hand. Okay, that's three, four, five, six. Those opposed? One.
Oh, seven. Did Brian, did you raise your hand at the last one?
I abstained from that one, actually.
Six, one, one.
Okay.
So that goes in. Number five, we were going past. Straw poll on number six. Um, the yard sale language, which is to remove the last lines after. I can't remember what it was, but it's removing the, the second.
The second sentence after the first sentence.
Yeah, it removes the whole second half of it.
Five, what, what were we doing?
Five, one, eight. Oh, number five?
Number five.
That passed, because that was the one we did first with your table?
Oh, I didn't vote, I assumed everybody was in favor of that, I, it was a wrong assumption.
Of which one?
Number five.
Number five on gas stations.
The, the changes we made to the table. I'll go back to number five. Gasoline station, five, one, seven, two, being stricken. It wants to strike the whole thing from the zoning ordinance.
Right, no, you're, you're correct.
Go with Brian's table.
And change the table. We're not going to address it on your sheet, because you like Brian's better.
Right, but it would.
But if we can vote on my memo, then.
Right, it would necessarily encompass removing, uh, five, one, seven. So.
So yours is not necessary.
All right, we're going to, we're going to include Brian's, uh, principal table of uses, five, seventeen, two in our little sheet here that, that's been provided to us, number five, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor of striking the gasoline station lines in five, seventeen, two and changing the principal use tables to allow gasoline sale as a permitted use in all three of our commercial, uh, commercial, industrial, flex and industrial. And to permit the sale of rental motor vehicles, boats and trailers in the industrial zone. I think everybody got that, right?
Right.
Is, all those in favor of those changes, raise your hand. It's a unanimous vote. Number six. The, the second half of the zoning ordinance regarding yard sales. All those in favor of Richard's proposal to strike the second half, raise their hand. Three. All those in, in, opposed to striking the second half, raise their hand. Five. It's defeated. At straw poll.
Recount.
Uh, yeah, I'll have a recount. Number seven. Uh, does not limit the color of light or the number of bulbs authorized for an external sign. Externally illuminated sign. All those in favor of the change proposed in number seven, raise their hand.
May I please just ask one quick question? I promise it's a quick one. What does shielded light mean? What exactly does shielded light mean?
It focuses on the sign and nowhere else.
Okay.
Shielded light has a shield on it or is a light bulb that's focused at the sign, Richard? Shielded, a shielded light has an actual shield on the light, which directs the light, like a canister light has a shield on it. So that would be a shielded light.
If we define it in here, yes.
Oh, come on, you're splitting hairs now. A shielded light is a shielded light. Shielded is the key word in the sentence.
The terminology.
Flood light is, is a light that just shines on it.
The terminology as it reads in the ordinance is a shielded external white light, I believe.
That's what it says.
Yeah. Now, shielded doesn't necessarily mean it's directed in a certain direction. It just means.
It is not playing out all over the whole neighborhood.
We don't have a standard for measuring those from lumens, especially those that are currently in existence.
Or specifying of its spotlight or floodlight.
Right.
Okay, so are we going to go with Richard's recommendation to, um.
Number.
Allow sign illumination by external shielded lighting, not specifying, specifying the color or the number of bulbs.
In residential, agricultural or conservation.
Yeah, well, that was the six point five. That was specific to six point five. So all those in favor of Richard's proposal to change that, put their hand up. I see two hands. All those who are opposed to that, put their hand up. One, two, three, four, five. Abstaining?
Put me down for a yes.
Put you down for a yes, okay, it's three. Three yeses, five no's. Um, number eight. Same thing. It's the same, same principle.
But in the commercial.
But in the commercial.
CI of Z in industrial and RSBO. Districts.
Commercial, commercial, industrial and then flex zone as well, in the RBSO.
Too bad you threw in the RB.
Yeah, that would have been a good, if that wasn't in there. I might, I.
Cross it out.
Well, you're.
Two eight, we're taking a straw poll, we're going to get out of here in a few minutes.
You have the opportunity to bring it back.
Yeah, if you had removed it, uh.
Well, I mean, we're going to have a public here.
Number of light bulbs, I would have voted for it. A color, I don't have a problem with.
All those in favor of number eight, the way it's written, say, please raise your hand. I see two hands. John, you going to change your mind?
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Okay, those opposed, raise their hand. Five. Number nine. Village Commercial District, portable A-frame signs that can cover up to nine square feet per side. Those in favor of that proposal, raise your hand. Two. Those opposed, raise your hand. Four, five.
Six.
Four, five, six. Number 10. Table of off-street parking to reduce the square footage from three hundred to two hundred. Raise your hand if you're, if you propose that amendment. I see two. You're opposed to it, raise your hand. Four, five, what's John doing?
Nothing.
Yeah, I can, yes. I know it's a straw.
You have to vote when it's time to vote.
I know, I will, because I'm not, you know.
Drama.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You're an undecided voter.
Yeah, you know, that's right.
He's a politician, he's waiting to see how the vote goes and then he's passing his vote.
So if you miss the next vote, next time, you're going to have to vote with the rest of us.
I'll abstain if I miss the next one.
Um, number 11 is shall the, uh, eliminate the hundred dollar inspection fee for the indus, for the parks. All those are favored, we have a three. Opposed to eliminating the hundred? I got four. I think that would be more amenable, Richard, if we could determine from our inspectors their reason for why they need to go down there. We have no data on that or input from the inspector.
I can still look into that.
That could change.
How many manufactured home parks do we have here? We have the Medford.
Pilagic Glen Falls.
Medville Co-op, which is essentially both of them.
Was the two, but it's now one.
And really, besides that, I don't think we have any other ones.
I don't know, do you count the one off of, uh, Parker Station Road as a manufactured home park? You might, if you talk to Mark, you might, yeah, but I wonder if.
Yeah.
He doesn't, he doesn't do inspections on that one.
He doesn't? Okay.
And the last one is number 12. Um, the change for the replacement of a non-conforming structure to allow the, the residents to have two years instead of the only one that's proposed. All those in favor of that? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? Abstentions.
I'm going to abstain.
Phil, did you, what'd you say?
Cause the site needs to be cleared, that's my issue with that.
Six oh two. So do you have the numbers, Richard, did you jot them down?
And it's a straw poll, so.
If you want to.
Exactly.
You want to come back and re-present at another meeting? You'd love to have it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, um. We have two correspondence and FYIs, there's a, we got the comments from the SIU office, everybody knows about that. There's a timber cut permit that George Merrill has presented to the selectmen for Gorham Pond Road. Um, if anybody wants to see the timber intent to cut permit, it's right here. And then we have the police department's statement with regards to their electronic sign.
Which I haven't had a chance to read.
Which no one's had a chance to read. So I'll let everybody go home and read it, and if you want to discuss it at a future meeting, we can. But in, in a nutshell, it sounds like they've addressed our concerns with their opinion.
I'm going to read it by a shielded white light.
Is that, um, a shielded white light?
Yeah.
Is that?
I'm not going to flip the pages more than once every fifteen seconds. See how that goes.
You know something, you'll, if you like that Teletubbies, you get too much flash and you'll get cuckoo. All right, is there any other business before the board?
In between, they should flash a little.
Second, do adjourn by Phil, seconded by Richard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Abstentions. Thank you everyone for coming.